Well, let's see, it didn't begin. I guess, I don't know. There it is.
It's nine o'clock. We'll call the November 1st Regular Meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors to order Supervisor Groves. Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Presentations, Board of Supervisors, item 1.1 receives an update on Digital 299 project and the general progress of local broadband development efforts, no fiscal impact. Is this your item Supervisor Cox?
I'm sorry.
1.1.
Supervisor Cox needs to come meeting. We should have Connie Stewart on Zoom. Connie Stewart is our consocial lead for our region for broadband development within the state. And she is on Zoom to give us an update both on our efforts here, kind of among ourselves, and also the Digital 299 project.
Good morning.
Good morning Connie.
Morning, can you see me?
No. There we go, yes.
Good morning. First of all, Supervisors, let me start out by apologizing for not being in person. Senator McGuire called a press conference this morning in Humboldt, and so I was unable to come. I promise you two things. First, I promise you that the next time I speak to you, I will be in person. And the second promise I'm going to make to you is that the next time I speak to you, I will be talking because we will be starting to build on Digital 299. That is a bold statement that I know I have come optimistically in the past, but I did get a call from a staffer at the Public Utility Commission. The environmental documents are almost ready, and it should be on the agenda either in December to approve the documents needed for permitting, or the January meeting. I'm gonna hedge my bets that far, but when I see you next, we'll be talking about beginning to actually build on 299. I have a presentation and I'm gonna share my screen here. And please, please feel free to interrupt me or ask questions along the way. I'm happy to do that. There's a lot of information. Let's see, first of all, let me click. This is the Digital 299 project in its entirety, and it includes a build from Eureka to Cottonwood. And then Cal Poly Humboldt is requesting a build to our marine lab in Trinity County. And there is also an opportunity for Spur and Hoopa.
Can I interrupt you Connie? I think you mean Trinidad, right?
Trinidad. Did I say Trinity?
You said Trinity County.
That is why I said, please interrupt me.
Doing great.
Okay, Trinidad, thank you. And then, and there are opportunities for additional spurs off this 299 route, which we'd like to talk to you about today. There's also a spur that was in the environmental documents to Douglas City, and a spur to Lewiston, but there are still opportunities for other spurs. And as I'm going to explain, there's a lot of money available for those spurs to build off of this middle mile. And the project, as I said, starts in Eureka. And one of the issues with this project was how are you, you know, you can get funding to build it, but how are you going to maintain it? Where's the revenue gonna come? And a lot of the revenue is gonna come because this project includes builds to four offshore builds across the Pacific. Two of those are already announced. One is to Singapore. And that build is almost complete. It will be complete by the end of 2023. It is the longest build. And here are pictures of me on the boat that is actually building it. This picture with the orange is what 4,000 kilometers of subsea cable look like on a boat. And the picture in the middle is the plow that's put on the ground as it goes across the ocean to bury it. And then there's just a picture of a few of us on the boat. And one of the other revenue opportunities is, and there's plenty of opportunities for more of these, is cable land, well, this is a cable landing station, but there are, there are needs for data centers. We're getting a lot of conversation. Trinity County is, would be amazing place for a data center because you have the cheapest, cleanest green power in the state. So that's an additional revenue opportunity in one of your business parks that I'd love to see in the future. This is the cable landing station in Arcata. And as I said, that one is already filled. So there's no more room in that station. There's another data center planned that is already spoken for. Cal Poly is looking at putting in one, so there's opportunity there. Why am I so excited about the offshore broadband projects? Well, because in this circle, in this circle are more people than live in the entire rest of the world. And so this telecommunication improvement will give our region an opportunity to trade and exchange and communicate more with this section of the world. And so I think, as with everything that I do broadband, I think about the economic advantage it gives our region as well. So as I said, the cable to Singapore, it's going to be the only US Southeast Asia cable that doesn't go through Chinese-controlled territory. There's no Chinese involvement. So that's also a strategic advantage for this cable as well. The other cable is going to Taiwan and is being built by Google. So before we go on, because I'm gonna start talking about money and about other projects that are happening, I want to do some definitions for folks that aren't engaged in broadband. So what do I mean about middle mile? It's really, you think about it as Highway 299. It's a middle mile connecting all of us in a transportation way. And it's a lot of capacity that's being carried for broadband, but it doesn't get normally to households. That is the last mile. Sometimes you'll also hear the term first mile. And honestly, I wish we had started, we had kept the term first mile because I think the last mile implies it doesn't matter as much. But no, it is the important piece that actually allows us all to hook to these cables, I mean, to this fiber, to travel. And so it is really essential that we, that we understand all of the community's needs, especially now that this broadband's coming through. And one of my asks to you today is going to be to make sure we build those anchor institutions on a list so that we have, we make sure we don't miss anybody when the crews are on the ground. It's always cheaper to figure out how to get to places when the crews are activated. So we want to make sure that we, you know, that we don't build it and then not be able to access a community in the future. And then open access is a network where there's a level playing field, right? So what's happened in our country a lot is that middle miles have been built, like actually the 299 middle miles being built by a company. And then that company doesn't really have an incentive to charge the same rate, or in some cases even a reasonable rate, and create competition. And so what the state is trying to do is build open access middle miles so that everybody can have access and pay the same price to be the last mile provider. I hope that was clear. What do I mean by unserved and underserved communities? Unserved are communities that have no internet connection. And we certainly want to make sure we hit anywhere where there's no internet connection, but unserved communities or any community that doesn't currently have 25 megabytes down and three megabytes up. The timeline for the middle mile projects I'm about to talk about is they are supposed to be built by 2026. So things are gonna, you're gonna start seeing a lot more construction soon. And then equity, and I know equity is a hard word in a lot of rural communities, but it's not a word that is about color. It's a word that acknowledges that some places are not treated the same as others. So I urge you to think about equity in terms of geography as well. And rural communities have not had equitable access to the, the technology and infrastructure they need to economically compete in California. And so equity is a word that you will hear used a lot when you're, when you're talking about broadband. And what it means is places like our home in that case. So I just want to say, because the programs are gonna be named equity programs, and I know that that's hard for a lot of folks to hear, but don't think in terms of color as much, I mean, there is some color issues, but there's place issues when it comes to broadband. So there's money everywhere. Everyone is throwing money at this problem. Governor Newsom signed SB 156. And this is gonna be a law that's gonna take us forward to 2026. And it includes 3.2 billion for a state middle mile network. It includes 2 billion for that last mile. And then there's some other mechanisms. The finance backing for public networks or the loan loss reserve fund, which is a fund if you want to create municipal broadband, which I'm not gonna talk about today because I don't think that that's really a viable option for our region. And then there's a technical assistance grant, and I will talk about that today because I've been working with your staff on having Trinity County put in a technical assistance grant, and we can talk about that as well. So I purposely, I can't, I purposely did not provide a huge picture of this map, but this is the current middle mile map, and one of the, the map is ever-changing. The state crew came up to Humboldt County last week, and they met with some of the tribes, and they had the wrong map. And there's still some issues in this current map, so don't focus too much on the locations of everything because they're still changing. But this is the middle mile, a big goal, which is to build 10,000 miles of open access middle mile throughout the state by 2026. In order to have that goal accomplished, a lot of environmental rules and regulations are being addressed quickly and aggressively. And Caltrans is taking the lead on a lot of projects in their right of way. As of, as of when this map was created, there's a plan for 146 miles through Trinity County. So we are also hoping that the state will work with the providers who are building 299 and buy or lease, lease for the life of the project, fiber in that so that there will be open access opportunities for your local businesses to anywhere they want to have access to the middle mile to help improve their last mile service throughout Trinity County.
Connie, Connie, this is Supervisor Groves. Could you go back to the map?
Sure.
So is this proposed new line or is this count existing line?
This, that is a very difficult question to answer. Currently, the plan is new line. However, there are places where there are lines where they could buy capacity. And that is being debated now.
So I'll point out in the northern part of our county that, that goes from Weirville to Wyrika there, there is an existing fiber line in that, and I just didn't know if you're going to open that up or put another line alongside that.
It's a very good question. I would, I would say stay tuned. I, I think the, you know, this is an ambitious goal. And I think that for many of the northern builds, they don't know how they're gonna do them yet, which is why I hope there'll be partnership opportunities. But we'll, we'll, you know, the rules are still being read. The plane is literally being built and flown at the same time. So, you know, anything I say today could be different in January.
All right, thank you.
Connie, while you're on the map, can I ask you a quick question? And I don't know if this is an area that you want to delve into or not, but there are lots of conversations about redundancy and what that means. And so when we look at these lines and we think in terms of, what if there was, you know, a line got cut, say, down close to Sacramento, and we see how this feed comes up, or it got cut over at the coast, and that comes to us. Can you talk a little bit about what those conversations are and provisions that are being thought about?
Sure, absolutely. So, and you know, there are some, I just, in our community, there are some additional aerial lines as well that can help. But you'll notice that there's circles. And what, what you always want to do is have a ability, if traffic is cut or if there's an emergency and something happens, that you can reroute traffic a different way, just like in our road systems. You know, you're trying to always build more than one way out of a community. So that is also part of the intent. Now, you, like I said, you will notice that there are some large gaps, and there are some existing aerials, but this is the terrestrial map. So there is other opportunities for even more. It's diversity, actually. The word redundancy gets used. Redundancy is when you have like multiple providers that have different paths that can reroute traffic and cooperate. So, but diversity. So we want, we want to have the ability to be able to go out any direction and still have no break in service. And that, and that's what we absolutely need, especially if we're going to try to attract economic development opportunities.
Perfect, thank you.
So I want to start with the technical assistance grant. And, and it is referred to as LADA, the Local Agency Technical Assistance. And then the application, grantees can apply for 100% of the funds, so there's no match necessary for this grant. And they, every grantee can apply for $500,000. The reimbursement for the funding can be for pre-construction work. This is one of the only funds that does that, where they can pay for environmental documents and and permitting and other technical things you need in order to get ready for a build. And so they could even help figure out a joint power authority in this case. So there's a lot of flexibility and the county is eligible. Community service districts are also eligible, and I think utility districts are also eligible. And I've been talking with your staff and we are recommending to the board that we apply for one of these grants to figure out how to get a spur to Hyam Palm. And, and I, I can, we can say more or talk more, but that is one of the more difficult spurs from an environmental standpoint. It would be nice to have the jumpstart money for that region of the county. The other fund I want to talk about is the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. It's known as BEED. This is a program out of Department of Commerce. And its goal is to build infrastructure that provides reliable high-speed access ongoing. And it is really also looking at economy. It's a, it's a comedy, economy forward, that's hard to say, thinking. And so right now, we're all trying to get clear on where there's going to be ability to bring in resources in our community and which programs are the ones we really have to pay attention to. And the middle mile and BEED are really two that we really have to pay attention to. So what could Trinity County do to get ready to take advantage of the resources that are coming our way? An anchor institution list is top of my agenda. And when we think of anchor institutions and why I'm saying the list needs to be created by people in Trinity County is because when we think anchor, when the state thinks anchor institutions, they think schools, hospitals, fairgrounds, governmental buildings, libraries. But we all know that there are more anchor institutions in our communities. And they are places that people gather and places that people shop that we, that are, we gather in good times and bad times. And so, for example, I put on the Humboldt County anchor list, the hardware store in Willow Creek. Because like, you know, if something happens, that store has got to be able to communicate because we know after fires and after other events, people are having to go to the hardware store. We can't afford to have hardware stores down. We know that there are other places besides, I mean, there are banks for example in my world, banks are anchor institutions in our community. Or the gas station is an anchor institution. So think, and certainly like every fire, fire district building is an anchor institution. So think greater about anchor institutions and make sure we get a list. And the, the deal with the list is I provide anybody building in our region a list and I say, you, you don't have to serve these places. That's, you know, the, the local ISP will serve them, but I need you to have a point of presence where they can hook into the middle mile that gets to that location. So along the, if you go, if you think back to my 299 first picture, you saw it going around Humboldt Bay. And I provided the company that built that line, 320 locations. I wanted to make sure that, that could get access to that middle mile if necessary. So that will allow them to know where to put their manholes and, and handholds so that they, somebody can easily pull cable from that location. So think broadly about that list. Wait, I, I'd rather challenge the state to take something off the list than have us not provide a robust list. And then the second thing is that there are already existing programs to cut the costs to individual households. And, and part of the BEED program is money to households to cut costs of, to make broadband affordable. And so we will need your help promoting these programs and sharing them with your constituents and hopefully making sure that our local providers are participating in those programs so that more people are signing up and we have more adoption. So I just wanted to give you a rundown. I talked about BEED and the $42 billion there. There are some other programs as well that are federal. And like I said, you know, we're, we're, which one do you pick to participate in? But the minority serving institutions funding, we, minority serving institution is an institution of a higher ed that has more than 25% of a population of, of a minority group. And so Cal Poly Humboldt is trying to get part of that funding to allow us to have laptops for our students. So if anybody wants to do distance learning, we can provide them with the technology to participate in classes at Cal Poly. So this is a way that we're looking to extend educational opportunities to other folks who may not be able to get to our campus. So we have applied to try to do that. But the computers would come and they could go to anybody who then needs them. There's also tribal broadband grants and many of the tribes in our region have applied for funding and, and Hoopa, the Karuk and the Urok tribe have received funding from this fund. The state programs, I'm not clear on yet. The middle mile grant is going to the state as well. And then, as I said, there's affordable connectivity funding. That's the money to go to the households. That if we get folks to participate, or our providers to participate in those programs, that helps bring the cost of broadband down. And essentially, anyone who qualifies for food stamps would be eligible to have a reduction in their broadband costs. There are other qualifications, but that, that's the one that comes off the top of my head. That's the end of my presentation. I, I made the slides available and I've left you with some links here that you can click on if you want to watch webinars on the, especially the BEED program and the middle mile, if want to see more on the middle mile and the local area technical assistance program as well. So, and then I left you more presentations of webinars here if you're interested. And please feel free to share those slides with everybody and anybody. So I'm happy to answer questions, thank you.
Hi Connie, this is Supervisor Groves again, and good to see you again. So the, the last iteration of this, the, the group putting it through is going to do a lot of last mile themselves. Is that built into this iteration or is it going to be just working with local providers?
It's going to be working with local providers.
So I had a meeting with one of the local providers last week and they had said that they really haven't been updated on this and aren't quite sure what's, what's happening and going on. And they're moving with different programs that aren't coordinating with your program. So it, it seems to me that we need to kind of work together here and not, I'm trying to come up with a question for you at some point, but, but is it possible for these, to, to meet with these local providers at this point and, and try to coordinate an attack?
Oh, so, okay, so let, first let me start by saying this. I, I think that everyone has the right to be skeptical and, and all contingencies needed to be because it has taken so long. And this is the seventh company we've worked with to try to get this project done. So first, first of all, thank you even for believing in me for, for as many years. I feel like I've been living a Don Quixote broadband play or something. So once the permits are in hand, I think that everybody can sit down. It's still going to take four years to build this out. And so I think it's for many local providers who have customers that need more access now, they've got to come up with now solutions. So I would, if I'm talking to providers, I say, go, go forward and then, you know, this is, this is the long, this is the long-term option for our future. Because many of the other, the other solutions will hit capacity at some point in the future. And then this will be an option to turn to. As soon as the permits are done, I will bring the company with me. And that's when I say I'll be actually face to face with you. But right now, I think everybody stay dormant until we actually get those permits.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, this is Supervisor Brown. I'm curious, is it already being planned to, to run line to all the schools in Trinity County? Do you know about that at all? And, and also I know that the Norrell Muk tribe in Big Bar, they have interest in having connectivity to the, what's the old Cox Bar School? It's their new tribal headquarters. And I'm curious if I could put them in touch with you. Okay, thank you.
Please do, please absolutely do. So the, the way schools, schools work is that they're, they're served by SCENIC. And so I know SCENIC is having conversations with the providers to make sure that they can, that they, they're, they can have access. So I, I, I can't answer yes to that, but I know SCENIC, they're in conversation.
Okay, thank you Connie.
I, I have a comment for, for maybe Letty. So Connie referred to staff working with her. What, what staff is working with her?
Excuse me, myself, Supervisor Cox and Ed Presley from Planning.
So
Skylar Fisher from Planning.
My recommendation to future board is to actually have a standing committee where we bring in existing providers, bring in whatever IT staff that we deem necessary. Have one or two supervisors on that. And, and because this is going to have to have a, a lot of local knowledge and a lot of small areas. And so I would think, like I said earlier, that we are doing different things. We're, you know, trying to tap different fiber from different sources. And there doesn't seem to me to be a coordinated attack. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, I've also have been in contact with our cell, cell providers as well, AT&amp;T and Verizon. So at some point they will be brought in as well, so. Having a standing committee, that would be something I would need direction from the board, so.
This is Liam from District Three, Trinity County. You said that getting up to Hyam Palm was an environmental challenge. I, I kind of think Trinity County in general is an environmental challenge. What was the extra challenge getting up through a Hyam Palm?
I, I, if we're going to, if we're looking at a terrestrial build, we've got to go through a lot of Forest Service territory. So figuring out exactly what's necessary for those permits. Many of the other communities can be reached by state or county or, or agency right away. That one is going to require, you know, and there's also the question of do you bring it up from, from Highway three or do you bring it from 299? But it would be nice to have something that like, sort of like Highway three, cut through the county north-south.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Liam, I would highlight that we have one issue in Lewiston that we're, providers trying to bring fiber through and it has to have three poles, three poles on BOR land. And that's estimated to take over a year to get environmental approval for the three poles. So you can imagine what it'll be like to run a lot of Forest Service land. And those three poles aren't on Forest Service. BOR. So.
And if I can just say, that is one of advocating for, for easier permitting access is going, is going to be critical over the next few years. Congressman Huffman has a bill to try to centralize broadband permitting. One of the big issues is that there's not a permitting office. There's not a state permitting office or a federal permitting office. So it's up to the districts or up to the individual forests to permit. And that means you can have somebody who's never permitted broadband before, working on your project and then turn around and that person leaves and you're, you're educating a whole nother group of people. We have one build we've been working on permitting for seven years. So, and you know, the staff, part of the problem is the staffs are changing. So I'm hoping that we will eventually get a big permitting office for this and, you know, they will know what they're doing and we'll get some more speed in permitting.
Letty, would this be something that Patrick has helped us with, working with BOR and Trinity County with the permitting process and all?
I would defer that to Ed Presley, the Deputy Director of Planning. He would include who he feels necessary.
All right, well, thank you Connie.
Thank you.
See if I can find my agenda. Right.
Who's the individual that we would need to speak with for this Lewiston problem that you're describing? Who would know about that?
Okay. Clerk of the Board, item 1.2, receive an update from U.S. Forest Service Representatives Regarding Matters of Interest in Trinity County.
Good morning. So I was just here a couple of weeks ago. I don't have a lot of information, but I do have some, some things I think you'd be interested in. So along those lines, just to tag on to the presentation we just had, I'm happy to report we've managed to add two additional permanent staff to our special uses team. So this would fall under our special use permitting. And we did just hire two more full-time employees to help us with some of that special use work. So as far as announcement goes, I'm, I'm happy to be standing here today and say our fire restrictions have been lifted because it would have been harder to stand here and tell you they're still in place for sure while it's raining outside. Also, the McFarlane NEPA document has been signed, was signed on Friday. Timber cruising is progressing. Timber Cruising is progressing on the pilot project and should be completed by mid November. The Hayfork Office is now selling wood permits and will be selling Christmas tree permits as well. And Christmas tree permits and wood permits are available in the Weaverville District Office. We had a Trinity County Collaborative Group field trip out to what we're calling the Big Ranch Project. That's the area behind, on the Six Rivers National Forest, behind Salier. Tying into the Burnt Ranch area and then wrapping around to Big Bar, so Big Ranch. It was a good field trip, I really want to thank the collaborative group for making time to get out there and work with us. Helping us to identify and define a potential project up there. I want to let you all know we will be canceling the Burnt Ranch EIS document just because. We're going to be making it bigger and kind of revamping it under this larger project and including some more acres. So we have to go in and cancel the previous document, the EIS that we had started but not finished. So we're just going to rework it and and get it done. And my estimate is that we do less side field work in twenty five, I'm sorry, twenty three. And then do the planning effort in twenty four, I expect that to take one year and to be about thirty thousand acres ish of coverage, NEPA coverage. So, let's see. I just wanted to let you know that that Burnt Ranch area is a priority for us because of its rankings for fire danger, fire and in critical fire sheds. Trinity County Rack, the Trinity County Rack is working its way through sixteen proposals. And I want to specifically thank the committee and Pat Frost for their commitment and diligence. The group worked from four PM to eight PM through a BD to get through all of the proposals. So they're they're making good progress and working hard on that. Fire will begin to move into our winter staffing pattern, including a focus on fuels. Fall fire hire will begin soon, as we try to pick up more permanent staffing. But to let you know, we will continue to staff at least one engine year round on each unit on the west side. Fuels, the the focus for the unit is going to switch to hazardous fuel reduction. The South Fork Management Group is focused on the August Fire Footprint. And a crew of twenty people began doing manual hand, manual fuels reduction work on Monday. For the TRMU side, the group focus is focused on the Carville area. And our crews were out and started cutting in that area to get that Carville project completed, they started on Monday. The West Side successfully hired ten seasonal employees for fuels implementation work this winter and spring, which is a different thing for us. We typically hire our temps in the summer and try to do mostly fire work with them. This year, we switched and we also hired temporaries and seasonals to help us with our fuels work in the winter. The Prescribed Fire Program will begin underway soon as soon as conditions allow. Planning, the WCF Phase Two NEPA will be signed by the end of the calendar year as well, August Phase Two NEPA. And the unit continues to work on the draft for the Good Neighbor Agreement here with Trinity County. With some support from the SO and from the Regional Office, helping me get that drafted. Hiring, as I said, we hired the two natural resource specialists that will help with special uses. We're currently conducting interviews for an additional six forestry positions through the SAF Hiring Event. We've had mixed results through that event, but we have been adding to our numbers. Additional front desk capacity has been addressed for the Weaverville and Hayfork offices. We've picked up additional person for each of those offices. And then just let you know, the dates for the open houses that I provided you with last time have pretty much been locked in with the exception of High and Palm. So those are the updates I had for you, but I'm available for any questions you may have.
A quick question on the Good Neighbor Authority, is there a projected timeframe that we might be looking to see a draft?
I should be able to get it through, get through it in the month of November and get something to you by the end of the month.
Nice, okay, thanks.
All right, well, thank you all very much, enjoy the rainy weather. And I won't see you again before Thanksgiving, so enjoy the time with your families. I did email you the updates, so you didn't have to take notes, I'm catching on. Have a great day.
You too.
All right, Trinity County Transportation Commission, Item 1.3. Receive a presentation from Green Dot Transportation Solutions regarding the Trinity County Regional Transportation Plan Update.
Greetings, my name is Jeff Schwein. The company is called Green Dot Transportation Solutions. And we were contracted by the County Department of Transportation and the Transportation Commission to develop the regional transportation plan. So while the presentation gets pulled up, I'll just get started. Basically, this is a twenty year planning document, it's a long range plan for. For transportation projects in the county. And we've been working diligently on it for about a year. And the last time I was in front of you was last spring when we were going out to the community. Talking to them about what types of projects would help them with their mobility, any mobility challenges, safety challenges. And now we're here to present the draft regional transportation plan, so. Great, got the presentation up. You can click it to the next slide, thank you. So every five years, we update this plan because projects get built, new projects come aboard. New laws get passed, new policies need to be aligned with. And so every five years, we update the regional transportation plan. But this is a twenty year planning document. So we have a couple of different spots within the document where we break things into terms. Short term, midterm and near term, and I'll talk about that. The elements of the plan include just a basic background of transportation in Trinity County. Talking about all the different modes, which would include cars, trucks. Roadway travel, also bicycle and pedestrian travel, transit and aviation. There are three main parts of this plan and they're the policy element, the action element, which has all the projects in it. And then the financial element. So we look at what projects are necessary to improve and maintain transportation facilities in the county. And we align that with what funding is available and come up with a plan for the future. Pretty simple, right? Years worth of work. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So like I said, we talked to stakeholders, we really like to talk to the community, all the communities. So we have done county tours in most of the small communities throughout Trinity County. And we still have four more this week to present the draft. And then in two weeks, we're going to four other communities. So really feel like we've sort of captured the needs and wishes. And the voice of community members throughout the county. And we've also worked very closely with the Department of Transportation. The Trinity County Transportation Commission, tribal groups, lots of different stakeholders. Trinity Transit, obviously, neighboring counties, Caltrans. So we involve everyone and smash a big project list together. So you can go to the next slide. So different ways that we didn't reach out to the communities was we did for announcements for our community meetings, we flyered. So actual eight and a half by eleven flyers on every post office and. General store, Ace Hardware, just most of the places throughout the county, especially when we had a meeting in that community. So we also advertised on some of the social media and local newspaper. And so, you know, we feel like the word got out, not everyone's interested, so we didn't get huge attendance at the first meetings. But up to twenty people, which I thought was pretty good at some of them. We had a survey which helped capture folks. Sort of their just personal information about how they get around. How often do you, you know, drive to this location or that location? Do you work within the county or outside the county? How many miles do you drive? Do you ride a bike? Do you have mobility challenge? Do you take public transit? Just things like that to help us capture information through data. Because data is the important thing for us to go get money. Can't get money without a substantial foundation of community outreach and data. So that was really helpful for us to capture that through survey and tangible information. Okay, next slide. So the policy element, really this element needs to be consistent with the general plan. Which I know that you are going through a general plan update right now. So a little challenging being consistent with a pretty ancient general plan, but we we did pretty well. You know, this document doesn't have to have super heavy policies in it. Basically, we just have to comply with the state and federal funding resources that fund all the transportation in projects in the county. So that's what the policy element mostly does. And then we'll go to the next slide. So financial element. Basically, there's about fifteen kind of main programs that fund transportation projects in the county. And some of them are very kind of flexible, but others are very specific. You know, the the Airport Improvement Program, you can, you get ten thousand dollars a year per airport and you can spend it on this. So very specific, others are a little bit more flexible. But most of them cater toward the mode of transportation such as, you know, state highways, local roadways, bridges. Things like that, safety projects. So over the next twenty years, there's an estimated four hundred and about four hundred and fifty million dollars worth of funding. That will be available for transportation projects. This is mostly to maintain and improve the existing transportation network. But also to bring new mobility to the region through through projects that have been identified. Okay, next slide. Oh, wait, go back to that other one, I just want to point out. So with the first five years, we have three ranges here. The short range, mid range and long range projects. Short range is the first five years of projects. We can pretty well predict that we're going to have about seventy two million dollars worth of transportation project funding through all these programs. To to actually go do all those first five years worth of projects. So that's where we worked very closely with the Department of Transportation, with Caltrans, to get those project lists as accurate as we can on prioritizing what projects are going to move forward. Part of that discussion was listening to the community and hearing people say, hey, you know what, like on my roadway, it's very dangerous, this one curve. Or every year, the road washes out and it really needs to have a major project there. That that conversation was had, listened to and and certainly this first five years of projects is is pretty set. And then the next five and ten year periods are a little bit looser because things change over the five years. And that's why we update the plan every five years. But that doesn't mean that there's a project that's on the the long range list. That doesn't get a certain source of funding or a grant or something and it moves forward to next year. So really, you have to develop the long list, even if you don't have very accurate cost estimates or design details on the project. You still have to have it in there just in case there's a funding source that comes along and you can jump on the project and move it forward. So the action element has all the project lists, I just have a smattering of, you know, probably an eighth, a tenth of the projects. So I'm not expecting you to be able to read this, but they are in the draft plan. There's, you know, fifteen pages of project lists and they're organized by the type of of project it is. Whether it's roadway, bridge, transit, bicycle, pedestrian or aviation projects. So right now, actually, it's it's not released to the public yet because we wanted to bring it to you first. So hopefully you feel special every day, but maybe today a little more. Anyway, so after this, I'll have my staff upload it to the website. It will be available at public libraries, at the Department of Transportation. And this is out for thirty day public review right now or by about noon today. And if you guys want to read it or just want to look at certain sections and have comments, anyone from the public. Hopefully, the folks from the community meetings that we went to and will be going to throughout this week and and two weeks later. You know, hopefully, they will look at the the comments that that they had and that we addressed those comments. And at least, you know, got some sort of identifier in there that we've been listening to the public. And then we have about thirty, forty days for comments to be come back to my team. Caltrans will be reviewing the document as well, as well as Department of Transportation. And then we'll go to final plan and environmental document adoption, hopefully in January. Back to this this body. So that's about all I have. I did want to say thank you to Sarah Syed from the Department of Transportation, Transportation Commission staff. Panos Kolkas and David Kolbeck, they've been really instrumental in helping us develop this plan. And my staff, but particularly the community, all the communities that we visited throughout Trinity County. Just super welcoming and warm, even if they had, you know, real issues to talk about. It was really nice to just explore the county more than I have in the past and and talk to all the folks who live here. Thank you.
I do have a question, so on the the funding sources page. Can you explain, you've identified this is funding that's perceived to be available at these different points in time. How does that roll in? Is that all handled through our own Department of Transportation in conjunction with Caltrans? Or these are grants that have to be applied for, how how does that piece work?
Yeah, so grants are a little bit separate. What we did with the grant programs is did an estimate for, say, the safety program, highway safety improvement program. We did an estimate over ten years, we're going to submit for projects and hopefully get about two million dollars. And we based that on averages of past H SIP Highway Safety Improvement Program grants. For the main funding sources, like the Transit Transportation Development Act. Like the State Transit, Straight Transportation Improvement Program, the Highway Bridge Program. For those, we can really estimate an allocation that's coming to the county. Through the Department of Transportation, for the most part, and the Trinity County Transportation Commission, who handles most of the transit funding. We did separate the Caltrans projects because all we have is a ten year list for them. But really, there was only about two years and it kind of skewed the financial element number, so we set it aside a little bit. They basically, you know, had as much funding in the first two years that we have for our first ten years. So so we pulled it out a little bit so you could really see, hey, local funds coming into the county for for county roadways, for culverts and bridges and things like that, this is the amount that we have. So for the most part, to answer your question, they're pretty established funding sources that come directly to the county through traditional programs. And then there's a couple of odd grant funded programs.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I saw on the on the cost page, you basically show a half a billion dollar shortfall. In what we want versus what we can have. But what I didn't notice, and maybe I'm just not digging deep enough into it. So the state of California is, out of Sacramento, is banning. Gas cars in twelve years or thirteen years. Which in a county like this would mean an enormous amount of infrastructure buildup to haul that. So we could look at a couple hundred million dollars just in electrical line expansion, let alone charging stations and that. I, that's not built into this that I saw.
Correct, yeah, so we are certainly aware of the changes coming by twenty forty. All at least transit vehicles, a lot of the other transportation infrastructure is expected to change to a different type of fuel. So we haven't developed those projects yet and they're. Most communities are expecting that there's going to be funding to help pay for the infrastructure. So those programs are just being created right now. The Federal Highway Bill, the last Federal Highway Bill, really is providing California with, I think seventy percent of the funding in that Federal Highway Bill. Was looking at alternative modes, alternative fuels. So the funding that's coming to California right now, you know, I'm on committees, other folks are on committees to help the. you know, I'm on committees, other folks are on committees to help develop those programs. They're coming, the funding, you know, there can't be any unfunded mandates, right? But they can certainly, they, there certainly is money coming. And, you know, just like that broadband monster number of, what was it, fifty billion dollars or something? There's big money coming to help a county adapt to the next, the future of of fuel.
But realistically, and I, and maybe I'm banging on you for something that's totally out of your
Sorry.
realm, that if we expect to have something as ambitious as what the state is predicting, that the planning stages have to be going on today. As you've heard, the project that's been tied up in several years of environmental work. So I see this as just as an absolutely unreasonable ask what they're what you're asking for at this point. It's great to say something, but, you know, a a plan is, you know, there is seems to be no plan.
Well, you know as well as I do that things are different in an urbanized area. And that's where the laws are made. That's where the funding's kind of coming from. So as in a rural area, you're a little isolated from the mandates, a little further behind in the development of those programs and plans. So there's two groups that you might pay attention to. One's called the North State Superregion Group. The other is called the Rural Counties Task Force. Both of those groups are transportation planning groups addressing the issues for rural California. So it's slower than it is in the urban areas and the programs, you know, we're trying to have a loud voice in the development of the programs to make sure that the rural's voice is being heard. But it's it's a challenge, always will be.
How does, how would you suggest this county go forward? I guess I'm just looking to see how big a generator I need to buy to charge my car, but what can this county do specifically to get in that conversation? And I know I'm I'm jumping on our planning or I'm sure our our transportation director is all up to speed on this, but I just to inform the board.
No, I I think these are great questions because part of it's here now, but part of it is an exercise in patience because nobody's going to come in tomorrow and just say you have to sell your car that burns gas. I mean, maybe that's some of the discussion going on, the federal level and Sacramento level, but for that to get here is ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. So I wouldn't really certainly we have to plan for it, but it's not an emergency right now. And my recommendation is to keep an eye on the funding sources because it is kind of, you work through small steps. So there are rural planning assistance grants through the California Energy Commission to install public charging infrastructure for the visitors who are coming here to recreate. For for locals who may have access to an electric vehicle. But, you know, it it hasn't even been decided whether it's going to be electric or hydrogen or another type of fuel that we don't even know about it. So I think looking at the funding opportunities that are out there and maybe taking some baby steps toward pursuing some some grants because they're here. And then sort of slowly work it out over time.
So I guess basically, this twenty-year plan is status closed, things are going to, is what we've done in the past. And at some point, there'll be another trying to merge these together.
Well, yeah, five years, we will update this plan, but there is some some mention of of alternative fuel projects. They're not actual projects in here, but there's some commentary in the narrative about adapting over the over the future.
All right, so I think I banged you up enough, so thank you very much.
No problem. Any other questions?
Respond to you, myself, Lydia and Panos, I've been on a small kind of ad hoc committee talking about this. There is some money through RCRC for funding for the initial stages of this. Of course, it's going to be a long time before this is all comes to fruition, but I think Trinity County is starting it, we're in the impetus of it so far, and we're moving ahead with it as as we speak.
Every county is required to establish a zero emissions vehicle ordinance. And we do have one in draft that will be presented to you most likely in December, because every county is required to have it approved by January twenty twenty-three, so.
But I I just see some bigger headwinds for us because as we talked about the rural aspects of this county, and you have three board members here that don't have electricity. And and so you're looking at
We should rephrase that a little bit.
We have, we're off the grid. We live a much better lifestyle than most people because we don't pay a PG&E bill that or a T-PAD bill, but I think that's just a symptom of showing how different this county is. And you literally are looking at hundreds of millions of dollars just to expand the electric line, let alone to, you know, get get out there with the charge, car chargers. So I guess that's my point, is that it's not just about installing Tesla stations. It's it's about our whole infrastructure for this county is going to have to be vastly expanded.
And just to clarify, that ordinance will be to streamline the permitting process for those charging stations. So it's not specifically for residential, but we we are discussing on strategically where to place them in our county if anyone wants to put, start a charging station at their business.
And those charging stations will be multi-use, not just Tesla, but all electric vehicles.
Sure, Tesla's kind of already gone through and done all of their work. And and actually, a lot of the private investment groups, the private charging stations are paying for their own infrastructure. All right, thanks, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Veterans Services, item one point four, reserve. Receive a presentation from Trinity County Veteran Service Officer Jennifer Dobbs regarding the Veterans Program and adopt proclamation supporting Operation Green Light for veterans and recognizing November twenty twenty-two as Veterans and Military Families Month. No fiscal impact.
Chairman Frazier and distinguished members of the board, good morning. I'm Jennifer Dobbs, and I'm honored to stand before you as the Trinity County Veteran Services Officer. I would like to thank the board for your decision to make my position full-time. This will allow me to better respond to and serve the veterans of Trinity County. I would also like to thank the board for your support of Operation Green Light and the designation of November as Veterans and Military Families Month. By displaying green lights on government buildings, residences, and places of business from November seventh through thirteenth, Trinity County residents can show their support for veterans and honor the sacrifices made by those who serve their nation as members of the armed forces. Service members face unique challenges upon their reentry to civilian life. While in the military, they are provided the first four tiers of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Physiological, such as food, shelter, and clothing. Safety, including employment, health insurance, and physical safety. Belonging as a valued member of a cohesive unit working towards a common goal. And esteem as a respected member of the military and one of the most trusted professions. Some service members even reach the final tier, self-actualization while in the military. For most who transitioned to civilian life, every one of those tiers just disappears the moment they get out, leaving them at the very bottom with no job, no home, no insurance, no identity, and for some with only the things they carry out. Fortunately, the military often provides service members with drive, ingenuity, and discipline, which can help ease that transition. There are over a thousand veterans living in Trinity County. They have contributed to the community in many ways. They are law enforcement officers, business owners, government employees, volunteers, religious leaders, teachers, school administrators, and more. Many of these men and women are not receiving the benefits they earn, and most are hesitant to ask for help. So often, I meet veterans only because concerned friends, family members, and coworkers reached out on their behalf. My goal is to convince every veteran in this county to consider allowing me to guide them through the long, confusing application process. During fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, I was able to interact with three hundred and forty veterans or family members, including twenty-three home visits and thirty-nine referrals from Health and Human Services. I filed fifty-two service-connected disability claims, eighteen appeals, five burial benefits, and two debt waivers. I obtained VA healthcare for fifteen veterans, several of whom were receiving Medi-Cal. I filed three claims for healthcare and monthly stipends for the surviving spouses of veterans who died from a service-connected disability. Three other family members were granted healthcare and a monthly stipend through the Family Caregiver Program. Some of these claims are still pending adjudication by the VA, but the claims that were granted resulted in an increase of twenty thousand dollars per month in recurring payments and one-time lump-sum payments of over eighty-three thousand dollars. During the last fiscal year, Trinity County veterans and their families received a total of approximately four point six million dollars from the VA. My office has already exceeded last year's awards. In the last four months, veterans received nearly one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in lump-sum retroactive pay and over thirty thousand dollars in new or increased monthly stipends. New federal legislation has made millions of veterans eligible for healthcare and service-connected disability benefits, and I am already seeing an increase in claims. I sent out over six hundred outreach letters to inform Trinity veterans of those changes and invited them to contact me for more information. There are many proud veterans in this county, and they have a variety of needs. The most pressing are access to mental health treatment, medical care, and in-home assistance, as well as a lack of transportation. Though I am often the first person contacted when a veteran is experiencing difficulties, I cannot be all things veteran. I can assist and advocate, but I cannot help them access services that are just not available in Trinity County. I'm passionate about helping veterans because I am one. I spent twelve years on active duty, including a year in Iraq. I served during peacetime and I served during wartime. I understand the confusion and stress involved with applying for benefits. This is what veterans have to navigate in order to access all their VA health, all their VA health and disability benefits, housing, everything. When they served, where they served, for how long, and what capacity, and the type of discharge they received can all impact what they are eligible for. I'm striving to reach every veteran, but I'm forced to shut my doors when I'm at my mandatory quarterly conferences or when I'm conducting outreach outside of the office. While conferences and outreach are vital to my operations, they do make it more veteran, do make it more difficult for veterans to get a hold of me. I will spend the next year working with Liz Hamilton to find a way to make the office more accessible to all veterans. I look forward to the time when all veterans in Trinity County have access to every benefit they earn and need. Now open for questions or concerns? Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you for coming along, doing a great job prior to you getting here a few years back. I have a lot of veterans that come into my place of business. They they were not so happy in the last year. Just really good comments and just thank you for all you've done and all you continue to do. And I see the book there and I I talked to a lot of the veterans, and it is hard to navigate, and just want to thank you for doing a great job. You've made a lot of people happy, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I hope I'm just getting started.
Good to.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans and recognizing November twenty twenty-two as Veterans and Military Families Month. Whereas nearly ten percent of Trinity County residents are veterans or currently serve as members of the Armed Forces, and Veterans Day has been set aside as the day all Americans pay tribute to the men and women who have risked their lives to preserve the liberty of our nation and the families who support them. And whereas each November, we honor the invaluable contributions of both our veterans and military families in Trinity County. And whereas veterans make our county stronger by sharing their military experience, leadership abilities, and desire to serve in both their professional and personal lives, often exemplifying the time-honored traits of duty, loyalty, selfless service, integrity, and personal courage. And whereas military families are the epitome of quiet sacrifice, with spouses putting their careers on hold, moving with little or no notice to locations rarely of their choosing, and assuming the familial roles left vacant by mobilized or deployed spouses, and with children adapting to constant change, settling into new schools and forging new relationships, all while coping with the stress of a spouse or parent far from home and potentially in harm's way. Military families never stop giving. And whereas Trinity County recognizes, supports, and appreciates our veterans and military families year-round, it is especially vital to do so during National Veterans and Military Families Month each November. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim November as National Veterans and Military Families Month. In observance of Operation Green Light, the Board encourages all communities throughout Trinity County to acknowledge and honor the service, sacrifice, and contributions of veterans by displaying a green light in the window of their residence or place of business from the evening of November seventh, twenty twenty-two through November thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, duly passed and adopted this first day of November twenty twenty-two by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion?
I would like to add something, Chairman. Oh, are you going to take a vote first?
Yes.
I I just want the board to know, I did meet with Jennifer Dobbs and Mike Webster and Liz Hamilton to discuss the county showing the green light at our county buildings throughout the county in support of the Veterans Campaign. So if you see those green lights, that is is a symbol of our support for them.
Did we decide to go with the light bulb or the screen?
Overlay, green overlay, yeah.
Right, we have motion in a second, so.
Supervisor Gross?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
All right. Public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to the subject matter to the appropriate department or follow or follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Good morning, board members. Scott White-Lewiston. I'm bringing before you an item that you acted on your April twenty-ninth meeting of this year, and I'm reading from that staff report. It was prepared by Shelley Nelson. Modify interim deputy director of building and planning. Requested action. Prove waiving the requirement to obtain a relevant land use and environmental planning certification and waive the requirement to possess five years' progressive planning experience for employee ID number and appoint as interim deputy director of planning. The summary of that item. Within building and planning currently, both the director and deputy director positions are vacant. The recruitment for director of building and planning has been running since December twenty twenty-one and currently have not received any qualified applicants. The recruitment for the deputy vacancy will be started shortly. There is no staff within the county that has the qualifications to assume either role, and current consultants are tasked with many other duties. I am asking the board, and this is Shelley, to waive the planning requirements for the deputy director position so I'm able to promote an employee to the role of interim deputy director, where this individual will serve as the role of administrator. The interim deputy director will provide oversight of contracts, monitor workflow, and provide fiscal management. There is no mention in your staff item of any planning responsibilities. So let's think about this. No experience, just doing admin stuff. So as your C, as your CAO is doing, let's put sprout stuff to this guy who doesn't have any experience to handle. That's a good strategy for us. He's now in charge of three departments, planning, building, and environmental health. I was told by your interim CAO that you have a lot of other priorities for her and staff management and helping the public. What could possibly go wrong with what we're doing here in Trinity County? The answer is pretty much everything. Go out and ask contractors, engineers, surveyors, developers, residents. Go out and ask contractors, engineers, surveyors, developers, residents. It's a disaster out there. And I'm asking you to please keep in mind what I'm bringing before you today, because in a couple of months, I'm sure I'm going to be back here, bringing an item before you about how your county staff has harmed my wife and I, and can you continue to do so. So please keep that in mind when you see me in a couple of months.
Any other public comment?
Morning, board. My name's Andy Wakefield. I live in the Mountain View subdivision in Lewiston. And here in opposition of commercial grows in our small little subdivision, and we're seeking out an opt-out. Briefly, some of the factors. Number one, decline in the quality of our life. Number two, safety concerns, guard dogs, intimidation towards my family, environmental concerns. And just a question I've had on numerous occasions that I've never received an answer to. You won't allow it in schools because of the small children, yet you'll allow it in these small subdivisions where these childrens are coming, children are coming home to. So I've never received an answer to that yet, several times I've asked it. So as per conversation with Supervisor Groves with my wife and, and his, and his advice, I've got all the documents that have been asked of us. Got an 80% protest in our subdivision to these grows, only 3% in favor. The other, the other 17% are there for, one declined because of concerns for his safety and his family. The others were unavailable, either due to they live out of the state or just didn't want to participate. So at this time, I'd like to submit these documents if possible. All right. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Chairman, I, I will be giving a report on, on this item in our ad hoc.
In our ad hoc report out?
No, in our ad hoc report out to keep the board apprised of what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Lorna Garwood. Me and my husband are here. We live in Mountain View Estates. I have to read this because this is what we did. We've been there since February of 1977. We're the longest current residents, 45 years with a good quality of life. Our subdivision is in a very small canyon, one way in, one way out. 25 parcels, average of one acre plus, we have three. We're curious why approve a commercial operation, a residential, residential zone of family homes? We are concerned with these issues. Extra in and out traffic daily, more road damage, dust erosion, noise, water issues, commercial water use on groundwater table. We all have wells, contaminated air that we breathe, lower property values. In July of 2021, our neighborhood did a petition to grant an opt-out on restriction against cannabis cultivation in our neighborhood, and that didn't pass. I have all the, I'm sure Andy had given you all the information, how many people were opposed to this, and three were not, and they were the growers. I also have a sing from County of Trinity, a sample ballot, and I want to read this. This is 2020. Whereas Trinity County has adopted commercial cannabis licensing ordinances that are based on sound land use and planning principles, incorporating four principles on the local regulation of cannabis, including Trinity County will be a safe place for all residents to live, to work, or to enjoy retirement and to raise their families. And the historical quality of life and natural environment in Trinity County will be protected and restored. And cannabis cultivation in Trinity County will take place without environmental damage and without detriment to neighbors or communities. And Trinity County will regain its reputation as a popular tourist destination. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Do we have any public comment on Zoom?
Have no chats and no raised hands. Raised hand came in as a sing.
Okay, go ahead.
M. Miller? Oh, it helps to unmute, doesn't it?
Go ahead.
I just want to throw out a whole nother idea. Melanie Miller, Weaverville. And not enough of the public really watches the Board of Supervisors meeting, but some of us do. And I've been listening to budget meetings and high-paid CAOs, administrators, and consultants talk about our budget, how we might have to cut services. The government's given us recovery money to be dispersed in the county. I'm sorry, but the money needs to be paid to county employees that are extremely underpaid, need to recover, and have worked for years for the county. It's just upsetting to hear like Supervisor Gogan asked for more money for himself, and he hasn't even worked two years on the job. He didn't ask for more money for his constituents, only himself. I would just like for you to have a reassessment of who needs that money, and that needs to be addressed without personal agendas involved. I thank you for your time, and I drop the mic.
We have no additional raised hands and no new chats.
All right. With that, we will close public comment. Let's see. Before we go into reports and announcements, let's take a five-minute break or seven. We'll come back at 10:30 back. We'll call the November 1st regular meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors back to order. We're moving into reports and announcements. Item 2.1, reports from department heads. Do we have any department heads who wish to report out? Don't everybody move at once.
Good morning. Susie Cockums, Division Director at Grantson Housing. Just a couple of minor updates for you. With respect to community development block grant funding, we're coming to the end of multiple projects, one of which is, I'm happy to report, some of you have got an email from me yesterday, but we wrote a grant about a year and a half ago for COVID funding through the community development block, block grant. And one I'm going to report out here in a minute, but the other is a purchase by Southern Trinity Area Rescue of a new ambulance. And we got pictures of it yesterday. It's not quite here yet, but the company that developed it was able to get outside due to a lack in rain. I guess they have a lot of rain where it's being made and took some really nice photos. So I'm happy to report that is on its way here. And then we've got a couple of projects that I'm going to close out between now and the end of December that you'll hear, hear more about, but they're all good things that happened as a result of community development block grant COVID funding and program income. So you'll hear a lot from me in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair, board members. Hope everyone is enjoying the rain. I certainly am because it hopefully will put to bed some of the issues that we've had over the last few summers. I am happy to report to you that our jail is coming along nicely. The secure key cabinets that we finally received after a long delay have been installed. The electronic programming is being completed by county IT right now, so we hope to have those online very soon. All of the HVAC systems have been repaired, tested, and completed. Our dispatch system is fully operational, although we are still having a few problems with our 911 system. Those are being addressed by AT&amp;T. Couple of weeks ago, we had another issue on a link between the coast and here. Humboldt Dispatch also had a, a problem over there, but it was minor, minor hiccups. Those have been addressed. We've been in contact with the Board of State and Community Corrections, advising them that very soon we will have the jail up, running, fully operational. We will be, we have advised them that we will be ready to decertify the old facility. They have sent over templates that I need to complete and send back to them to decertify the facility. And my direction is that we will be serving Thanksgiving in the new jail. So that's where we're moving along on that. Our animal shelter is full, and I advise the public that it, we've had a big problem with that. We continue to see an increase in calls for service on that. People are finding additional animals and wanting to drop them off, and we can no longer take any animals. Our options to distribute animals to outside humane facilities have been exercised as much as possible. We're currently trying to figure out how far we can continue to take animals to these humane facilities. Because with the price of fuel and the price of, and the cost of staff, we have to draw the line somewhere. We can't continue to keep going further and further away. So these are some things that we are considering internally. In the near future, I am going to be coming back to you as the board to discuss the issue of our manager slash ACO position. Because during budget negotiations, I, sorry, during the budget building process earlier this year, I had asked for an additional ACO position. Because of budget funding, that position was declined to be added to my allocation. We're at a point now where the duties of the ACO slash shelter manager has become to the point where it's breaking. The ACO slash manager can no longer perform the duties of animal control officer in the field efficiently. Those additional calls are being handled by deputies now, which is taken away from their primary duties. So we're going to have to figure out how to add an additional ACO somehow. Health and Human Services had previously identified funding for this position, so I'm just letting you know, I will be coming back to you. I'm going to have to somehow figure out how to get that position because our call volume has dramatically increased over 100% from 300 to almost 600 calls per year. My ACO cannot handle that. So I'm just letting you know that. And that's pretty much all I wanted to let you know. At the And that's pretty much all I wanted to let you know at this point in time. Questions?
Yeah, Health and Human Services, I think if I remember right, was $93,000 back in the day. Are we still planning on getting that and hiring someone for that spot?
That, that money quite some time ago has been increased. This year's MOU was increased to approximately $225,000, which would have also included additional monies for the ACO position. But because of the Budget Committee and the negotiation that went on at that time, that position for the additional ACO was not approved. So that money, although was put in the budget, is not spendable because from that MOU with HHS, that money was only to go towards the ACO position.
So we lost the 225,000 completely?
Not the 225,000, no. It was only the money out of that 225,000 that was for the additional ACO. The other monies in that MOU is still coming into the Sheriff's Office to pay for staffing for the part-time positions, for operations in the shelter and for the Shelter Manager slash ACO and the rabies program. That's what that money comes into is for the rabies program.
Okay, and I guess with the good news there is that in three weeks, the jail will be open.
We anticipate serving Thanksgiving dinner in the jail. That's my direction. So if we can open it sooner, we will do so.
That's soon, three weeks. That's great, good to hear.
Absolutely.
Yeah, fantastic.
Thank you.
Any other department heads?
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. Drew Plabani, Environmental Compliance Specialist and currently Acting Division Director for the Cannabis Division. I have a few quick updates for you. This past Friday here in Board Chambers, we had the first stakeholders meeting for the Cannabis Equity Program. And we were able to have it translated into the Mong language with the help of our newest code compliance staff who is fluent in Mong. I think we had about 60 people in attendance between here in person and on Zoom. And we have a meeting with Grants Department this afternoon to continue forward on that equity type two application. Couple of quick numbers for you since I believe 10 October 20th was the last update. We currently have 67 compliance memos that have been noticed in the paper with an additional seven that should be in tomorrow's paper. And I believe we have 42 licenses that have been issued and picked up. I don't know if there are any questions for me.
How many have, how many have completed CEQA?
If we go with the numbers, including what will be in tomorrow's paper, 74.
Okay.
So in your numbers, do you add the 74 to the 42 and that's the total that are kind of, 42 are done and 72 more are coming?
It would be the difference between those two numbers.
Do you continue, the equity meetings to continue or was it a one-time thing?
We are working on having an upcoming meeting in probably the Hayfork area.
Could you let me know when that is? And did you feel that they were pretty fruitful, that people gained some knowledge out of it?
I think so. I think it gave insight into the process and sort of clarified some of the information that was presented in the Equity Manual versus, you know, I had a conversation with staff from GoBiz as it relates to our funding request. And so there are some things that were clarified. So I basically wanted to take people through the Equity Application that is now live on the County Cannabis Division website and, you know, make sure that people understood how to fill that out and what criteria applied. And also clarified that although there are some large numbers that are presented in the Equity Manual, that the funding that becomes available is all contingent on, you know, the funding request and grant approval process from GoBiz.
Thank you. Thanks for availability on Friday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Do we have any department heads on Zoom? All right, that, we will move on to report from County Administrative Officer.
Good morning, Board. This morning I did receive a phone call from our Treasure Task Collector informing me that they will have to have their office closed to the public today due to some unfortunate circumstances. So they will be closed today. In addition to my report, I did have a department heads meeting last week, which was, went really well. We did discuss the strategic plan and place making plan and a lot of enthusiasm from the department heads. Some department heads have volunteered to be part of that implementation team. So I am starting to have those discussions with those who aren't interested. So I will keep you updated on that. Susie and I have worked on the Request for Proposal for Collection Services. So that should be out sometime this month. So we hope to get some interested vendors to provide those services. The fee study preparation is still in the works. We've been in contact with our financial consultant, so I will be keeping you updated on that as well. I did receive a update from our Solid Waste Department on the tub grinder. They did have a demonstration on October 17th. And they are currently working on brush, the brush piles that are there at the Solid Waste Department. They hope to be fully operational by spring. She mentions that she does want to do a cost analysis to determine what that charge will be if any outside partners want to use the tub grinder. So currently they've been working on onsite repairs as well as any asphalt and bin structures in the outside service areas. So that's all I have at this moment.
All right. Reports from members of the Board of Supervisors. I guess we can start with you.
All right. I don't have any out of county travel. I did have a initial talk with the Humboldt Transit Authority. They are attempting to adapt their fleet to be all hydrogen fuel vehicles. And they want a source for hydrogen fuel. And years ago, I had discussed with TPUD the opportunity to work with Shell on producing hydrogen fuel. And that fell through due to a one cent on the kilowatt hour discrepancy. And Humboldt Transit Authority wants to open up those discussions again and look into the opportunity of working with TPUD on developing potential hydrogen fuel. I guess it would be electrolyzers in the county. And we would be producing fuel exclusively for Humboldt Transit Authority. So TPUD was interested and those discussions should be happening throughout the next couple of months. So that was kind of neat to hear about. And aside from that, I just got an email that our zero emissions ordinance was approved. So we have all green dots now. I think that was in reference to what Skylar was working on for our zero emissions vehicles. And there will be the general plan meetings in District Four and Junction City on Wednesday, High and Palm Thursday, Hawkins Bar Friday, all at 6:00 PM. I plan on attending all three of those, and that's all I have.
Gogan?
I have no out of county travel. I just wanted to add a little bit to Liddy's talk on her tub grinder. I did go out there for the demonstration on that. I talked to Diane as the demonstration was going on. The thing is enormous. It works great, no doubt about it. Couple of things I did not know was above and beyond the cost that we paid for it, there was additional, don't quote me exactly, but $150,000 that was needed to be paid to make a California emissions correct. So we do have a very valuable piece of machinery out there that could be easily sold to somebody else in California since we already have it certified. They think it's going to work. They're going to do a fee study on it and bring it back to us. I think we had just a simple agreement of maybe sometime next spring, early summer to see how it, if it's paying for itself. If it's not, it is difficult to move. It does take a semi truck to move the thing. It is huge. So I, I didn't formally go through this with you, but I thought it was a good idea to let them have their, their six months and see if it pays off or not. And then we could come back and decide what to do with this and maybe decide if a couple giant chipper shredders would be better off than a tub grinder. So I think that's kind of informally where I, where I stand on that. But it did work. It was, it was very impressive.
Nice.
I did attend a meeting on 10/26, a exclusive Glenn Trinity Community Action Partnership Meeting in Orland. Mostly housekeeping type meeting. There is funding available for people, low-income people in Trinity County that need assistance with heating. Even the firewood, they can help you purchase firewood. There's opportunities for help with utility bills and weatherization programs. So if you know anybody that is in need of that, that hasn't been in, hasn't taken advantage of those programs, you can reach out to me. I can give you the contact information or Liz Hamilton has all that information also. So that's all I have to report.
Okay. On, I attended the North State Planning and Development Collective's Fall Regional Economic Development Summit. And they reported on three huge projects that are going on. Two of them, they're all really interesting, but one of them that really pertains to us would be the Connected Communities. It was presented by Trinity Sterling. She's the project coordinator for Sierra Butte Trails stewardship and described the whole Lost Sierra route. So I would ask Supervisor Gogan if you've had success in reaching out to Greg Williams to do a presentation to us?
So I did, funnily enough. I did reach out to Greg a few times and I spoke to him once. And he wanted to know if Trinity County paid any, we'll call it presentation fee? And also if we gave, if we provided lodging?
Oh, maybe we could do a Zoom meeting.
Lightly said back to him that, to my knowledge, we have never provided that to anybody. And he hasn't got back to me yet, which was just, he got back from Oregon, I think on the 26th, 27th. So just in the last few days, I let him know that we don't pay and nor do we put you up. And honestly, we were both at the same RCRC meeting there. And I certainly didn't take him as someone who wanted money for presentation.
You didn't see that, that's okay. There's plenty online that we can access and the film and that kind of thing. So that's all right.
And, you know, the, the bad thing is it fits our county so well. I mean, it's, it's like his love what he was doing.
Oh, it doesn't mean we're not going to explore this.
I know that. And he was very engaging when we, when we talked.
Okay, moving right along.
Sorry.
Have been having ongoing conversations about the Main Street tree situation. And so that's a saga in process. And attended the first five annual meeting where we looked at our annual report, the evaluation report and the audit report. The Commission explored ways by which Trinity County can more effectively serve more children, zero to five, in the coming year. The Commission gave direction to the Executive Director to pursue avenues for change on, on the report and the findings, just looking for ways that we can do better. And the Commission also considered the means by which to fill vacant and unattended seats on the board. The broadband team meeting, Connie's presentation covered that. So that was several meetings since the last board meeting that we have had. I toured the Sustainable Resource Management Plan in Anderson. That was, that was cool. I got to learn how the non-merchandiseable waste wood from the Shasta Trinity and the Lassen National Forest, as well as from private lands, are processed and produce power to enhance the remaining standing timber. Firesafe Council, the Fall Fire Waste Community Meetings are taking place between November 8th and December 19th throughout the county. So this is the opportunity to share information with our communities about upcoming projects, work with them on the development of new projects, showcase programs that residents are eligible for, and work with folks on defensible space and home hardening goals. You can see where your applicable meeting would be. Go on firesafetrinity.org and there is a list there. For Weaverville, for District Two, our meeting is on December 13th at 6:00 PM at the Weaverville Volunteer Fire Department Meeting Hall. It's time to renew your annual burn permit. So Tara mentioned the open houses that are coming. So for Weaverville, our date is November 14th, 5:30 to 7:00 at the Ranger Station. She's working them last year. It was at Trinity Alps Performing Arts Center. This year she's doing them more as an open house, so it will be at the Ranger Station. On October 21st, the first round of awards was announced for Community Economic Resilience Fund. They call that SURF. This is for Phase One, which is the planning phase of the program. And as a part of the award announcement, 11 out of the 13 regions were awarded a maximum of $5 million, as well as receiving confirmation of both the convener and co-conveners. So Jason Schwinkler, who handles, oh golly, it escapes me. Sorry, have to grab that and look it up again. He works through, I just can't look at, find the name of his company quickly. Works through Chico State and there, it's interesting, there are three divisions there. And I finally put the pieces together. One of those divisions is the, the whole broadband unit that Connie works through. So his, I'm just going to call the company. It is now referred to as the High Road Transition Collaborative. They are the ones who will route this funding. This part is for planning. And so we have a seat at this table. I had a conversation with Jason a month ago and said, okay, how does Trinity come to the table? And he said, well, basically just what you're doing right now. I didn't even know Trinity was interested, so thanks for showing up. Grab yourself a roundtable of folks to have the next conversation. And so that happens on the 7th at noon. So more to come on that. Once the planning phase is done, there has been allocated $500 million statewide to implement projects that are planned and decided upon. So basically at this first meeting, we're looking for, okay, what do you need from us? What is, what does it look like for us to show up and have viable projects ready to go? So I'm excited to see what that yields. And, and then we are now looking for 2023 grand jury members. So I reached out and have two of the three I'm supposed to provide. So if anybody's interested in serving on the grand jury, can let your supervisor know. That is the end of my report.
Supervisor Gogan?
Yeah, some, lot going on in CSAC with housing and land use. So I'll just hit a couple of them here. These are ones that have made it to the Governor's Desk as of four days ago. AB 916 would prohibit county legislative body from adopting or uh, would prohibit county legislative body from adopting or enforcing an ordinance requiring a public hearing as a condition reconfiguration uh, existing space to increase a bedroom count within an existing dwelling unit. Uh, that probably doesn't have a monstrous impact on us, uh, but it does take out the public's input on that process. Um, kind of the bigger one for us is AB twenty-two thirty-four. The bill establishes a time limit for approval and requires online permitting of post entitlement permits. So this is something Jeremy's always uh, wanted. But our capability to do that is, I'm not sure. Uh, specifically, this bill requires local agencies to complete review, either return in uh, writing and a full set of uh, comments the applicant with a comprehensive comprehensive request for revisions or return approve, permit, uh, application. Um, and electronically notify the applicant within thirty business days. So that's something that uh, our staff is going to have to make sure we're capable of doing that. Um, that could come up as some problems for us in the future. Um, go ahead and pass those down. The, I, I could not find our flag. But it is someplace, but we have, we have, no, I've got a copy for her. This is the official flag of Trinity County. And it had, it didn't fly over the courthouse because it was not configured right to fit our poll, is what I remember Wendy Tyler telling me way back when. Yes.
I was going to say, we do have, there's a box in the admin office.
Oh, you did find them.
Yes.
I, I didn't, I asked Susie and I didn't want to push her too hard because Susie's, I'm sure it wasn't her highest priorities to find me a flag. But anyway, so we do have the flags there. Um, so um, if you choose in the future to change the flag or do something else, but it would take an an act of this legislative body to do away with our, our great seal or our great flag of Trinity.
This is our active flag.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I can see changing that.
Maybe uh, you go in the office and see uh, the ones uh, it, this does fly over the elementary school. It's the only place that I know it flies. Uh, and the sheriff's department. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Um, and um, so anyway, uh, it's all up to you guys at a later date. Uh, I would recommend that if you're going to look at anything, maybe the county seal because it uh, is a really cool county seal and I'm really impressed, but it is very outdated in its statement. Um, some big news, more serious news is that today I heard that the Hoopa tribe is suing the federal government for three hundred and fifty million dollars due to the damage that they have done, that federal government has done to the Trinity River. And uh, this is probably the mic drop of what's been going on with the Hoopa tribe for quite a while, uh, when it comes to river restoration. I would guess that this is the the time that they're going to move to try to take over control, uh, management, control of the river through this three hundred and fifty million dollar suit. Uh, I'm sure this is a uh, process is going to take a long time, but uh, hope that we as a county stay committed in being part of that process so we can still have some say over the river that mainly is in our county. And uh, I, I did have a meeting, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy uh, group, which we are newly membered of, uh, us in Siskiyou County. So it's broken into several sections and each section has a voting representative in it. Um, uh, at this point, um, since the two are added from the north, they are going to try to get a legislation to add another uh, division. Uh, but at this point, uh, they uh, that Siskiyou County will become the voting member uh, of, of this uh, be, um, because Ed Valenzuela is the supervisor that would be in this role. Uh, I don't know that we've set a policy from this board on who will get it, but this is all in uh, District One. So I assume District One represented would get this in the future. Um, and, and so uh, Trinity County will be dropped a little lower in the list while we get more experience in, in this process. And then uh, this is sort of a question, sort of a statement. I believe by this point, we're supposed to have appointed a CSAC representative by November first. So our next meeting, we need to appoint a CSAC representative uh, for the following year. For whatever reason, it's always done two months before we do our regular representatives.
The reason for that is typically because they want us to make those appointments prior to the annual meeting.
Right.
Um, and I don't know, I haven't seen the letter from them reminding us to make those appointments.
They, they sent an email through at some point.
And I have probably overlooked it. I'm sorry.
But, but I, I know it's been a tough several months for you, Susie, so I'm not really blaming. I am going to the CSAC. And uh, be the voting member unless I'm pulled off in the next day or two, whatever. But so that's something that we need to do on our next meeting.
Do we have a special meeting? What, what, what happens if we're late?
I think, I think that person just doesn't get to be the voting member at the meeting. Well, I will be the voting member.
Right.
So we are represented.
Okay.
This is next week, so.
Oh, I follow.
Right.
Okay, so we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
But it, it's just that we need to make that appointment on our next meeting.
Right.
And RCRC will be the same way.
No, RCRC is not the same way. It goes um, it goes at our normal time. Uh, RC is the fifteenth of November.
That's what I thought I saw in it.
Yeah. We've never, that's always gone on to the, the last person.
Uh, yeah, RCRC has never asked us to make that appointment in advance of our annual appointments in January. CSAC is the only one who has ever asked us to make that appointment early.
Uh, I mean, that's something you can change in the future for yourselves if you choose to. But uh,
Could be interesting on the year when you have three new board members to make appointments in November.
Yeah, so that becomes one of the problems is if, if, how do you appoint a CSAC member if they're not a member of the board yet?
Right.
So that's in, in the, the one advantage of having a CSAC member appointed, appointed first, that does start channeling, channeling where other people are going to go. So normally you don't have a CSAC member and a and a RCRC being both leads. So usually it's one or the other. So you start splitting it out. And um, yeah, that's it for now.
All right.
Excuse me, Chair. Since Ed's not here today, I've asked our associate planner Skylar Fisher to provide information to the board and to the public of our general plan sessions that are happening this week.
Okay, so it's like, we're going to put that under your report out?
Yes.
Okay.
So Skylar.
Thank you, Chair, um, supervisors and members of the audience, um, here and on Zoom. Um, so we are starting our community meeting kickoff tonight, um, for the general plan update. So these are going to be meetings at six o'clock, um, today, Tuesday, November the first through um, this Saturday, so November the fifth. And so every night we're going to be having um, two meetings in different communities to get community input on the general plan update. And I know a few months ago now, I said, we will not be stopped in our general plan update process. And I was like, fire or no weather will stop us. So not even the rain will stop us in our endeavors of having these community meetings. They will go on, um, despite the weather unless something crazy happens. Um, and so tonight we are going to have the meetings in Weaverville and Hayfork at the CD Hall and at the um, fairgrounds. And then tomorrow we will be in Lewiston and Junction City at the Lewiston Community Center and the um, Junction City Elementary School. On Thursday, we will be at the Post Mountain um, Fire Department and the Hyam Palm Community Center. Friday at the Hawkins Bar Fire Department and the Douglas City Fire Department. And we will wrap up our meetings on Saturday at the um, Ruth Lake Community Service District Hall in Mad River and at the Trinity Center International Odd Fellows Hall. So we're very excited about this. Um, we got a lot of feedback. The last time that the general plan consultant team was here, that um, community members wanted more focus on um, community plan development specifically. So we're trying to capture that um, within the general plan update by getting as much input as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. And Board, I, I just want to really recognize and praise Skylar. She's been a strong team player in getting all of this coordinated with our, our consultants and uh, just really want to recognize her and appreciate her time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do want to throw in that even though public comment made an attack on some of our planning in that our planning staff and has been doing an outstanding job and it's uh, some of the best organizational running that I've seen in quite a while. So I want to thank Skylar and Ed and everybody involved in that. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Supervisor Groves, you want to kick us off on our, our ad hoc update, since you mentioned earlier you were going to bring up?
Yeah, so, so the mountain view uh, uh, area in Lewiston, their subdivision has uh, been working on their opt-out for a while now, uh, as we all know in the past that these things take quite a while to get through our system. Um, but uh, they uh, submitted uh, to me electronically what they submitted today in, in person. Uh, we have sent that off to um, uh, both Ed and Letty have that copies that. So when we finalize our uh, new ordinance rider, that will be part of their packet. Uh, it will be up to the future board to decide on what uh, priorities that, that, that go to that the new ordinance rider. So um, I, when they asked if they should bring that up uh, to us personally today, I wanted them to, you guys to have at least a face and, and hear what they have to say. And so when it comes to prioritizing uh, that opt-out, you guys can make your decisions and, and put it where you feel is best possible. They have had the same sort of issues as a lot of places. Um, but you will have to weigh the, the timing to the general plan and, and all those issues that will come up at that time. Uh, understanding that there really has, we haven't even gotten to any new licenses yet uh, in, in this uh, system uh, that we've got going. So that will be a, a while off before any new applicants could be uh, looked at for areas that may want to go into opt-outs. So that, the hard packet, we'll go ahead and give off into um, Letty and Ed's hands. So they have that and um, can do what they say or make a decision on where you want to put it. Um, as on the other cannabis meetings, so what's happening here is we're taking a break before our non-cannabis days, which I love to say, are on uh, the Thursday before we meet here. So we don't uh, have a lot of new updates for you guys. So uh, it, it continues to move through. If we start getting to those seven every week, I mean, I think that's great progress. Uh, of course, Ed last time told us, you know, he's shooting for twenty uh, and bless his soul if, if, if we can get that um, that high. And uh, I don't, what other things do we have to discuss?
Um, we did, well, it's been several ad hocks ago now when we, the, we had the Nor Elmuk tribe came and they had some concerns. Um, Drew and myself and Ed met with them last Thursday and uh, went over some of their concerns. I think uh, those productive meeting and I think that we'll be able to move forward there where we can address their concerns without creating any more major roadblocks in the, in the licensing process. So it seemed to be, everybody was working together, which was beneficial. And we'll try to keep you up to date and keep the board up to date on how that goes too, as it moves forward. And then that, I don't think uh, anything besides what Drew gave us this morning for his weekly update. I don't think we have much more.
I, I still think we're on, on, of course, this is up to Dan or uh, Jill when when she's seated or if she's seated, but next in line to be seated. That the ad hoc is, is slowly, we, we are slowly crescendoing down where we're doing less and less and, and really just more or less getting updated on what everybody else is doing and not having to put a lot of input in. So I think uh, the time for the ad hoc is really waning down here and I would hope that it's basically dissolved by the end of the year.
That, I, I agree with that. I think we're uh, we've about met the objective of getting a operational, operational cannabis department. It's um, we're not having to answer that many questions anymore. It's uh, they're doing a they're doing a good job of taking care of their own self, so.
I, I think a consideration for uh, next spring might be uh, an ad, ad hoc that is help overseeing the, the regulation rewriting, or at least uh, overviewing some of it before necessarily it goes public, just to try to lower the amount of landmines, but that will be up to the, you know, the board.
All right. Any questions? All right, uh, we'll move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment on consent? Saying none? Do we have any uh, anyone that wishes to pull any items to be considered separate? Three, four?
Only because of, I guess it's the type of craft layer.
Okay.
Chairman Frazier's staff would like to pull three point five.
And three, four, five. Any others? Anyone care to make a motion?
Look to prove as presented.
Second. Thought about pulling three one one, just make Dan read it all, but.
I'll pass it to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox? Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
All right. Item three point four, Board of Supervisors appoint Margie Watkins, District One, to the Trinity County Fair Association Board of Directors, serve a term concurrent with that of Supervisor Groves. Supervisor Gogan?
Is, it would be more concurrent with um, Rick's term, correct?
I'm looking at staff. I'm, I'm not sure how that works.
No, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
So no, it's, the appointment is uh, the, the new supervisor has a right to change any board, board members that they want on the fair board.
So it would be for two months.
This appointment is
Until now till January and then.
And then, and then if he chooses to leave Margie on, then he would just leave Margie on if, if he felt that. Go ahead. You, you're wanting to jump.
If, if Supervisor like Luke Tyler would like to continue to have Margie serve as his representative on the fair board for District One, then we would make a reappointment in January to reappoint her to serve a term concurrent with that of his elected term. But this one is concurrent with Supervisor Groves's term.
Yeah, so is that clear as mud?
Absolutely.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to, uh, does that need to go to public?
Oh, yes, I guess we do need to open public comment on item three point four. Do we have any public comment? Oh, yes, I guess we do need to open public comment on item three point four. Do we have any public comment?
I'll move to accept three point four as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Fraser?
Aye.
All right. Clerk of the Board, item three point five. Point in lieu of election, those qualified individuals who submitted letters of interest to fill the remaining vacancies for office with insufficient candidates beginning December second, 2022. Ruth Lake Community Service District four year term expiring December 2026. Ben Boak and Roger D Kirkpatrick. And Trinity Life Support Community Services District four year term expiring December 2026. Jerry H Cousins.
We pulled this one because we had one late letter of interest submitted to us. And after discussing with council, the, we thought the best way to handle it would be to give you guys the option to consider making that appointment as well today. It was a letter of interest from Marla Walters. She would like to serve in, on the Trinity Life Support Community Services District. There is two vacancies. And so her letter would be the second letter of interest that we received for those two vacancies.
On October 26th, one day after the October 25th deadline. There are just, you know, pros and cons to accepting late letters. So that might be your decision. Obviously, you're setting a precedent in some regards. And it also, you know, I don't know who else, if anyone would have submitted a late letter had they known it might be accepted. But it also is a difficult position to fill and there are two openings. So this is really your call.
Is there any kind of a review process that these entities go through with the letters that they receive?
These entities don't receive the letter. It's, they're submitted directly to us as the clerk of the board for you to consider appointment. The only review that we do would be the elections official confirms that they would have been eligible to file candidate, that they're eligible to serve in that capacity. And she did confirm that Marla is eligible to serve in that capacity.
And what are the other cons to doing something like this, other than setting a precedent that late letters are accepted?
Well, like I said, it's just, I mean, if there had been, for instance, one seat available, you're creating competition for someone who submitted timely. But it also, like I said, there might have been other people who might have submitted on the 26th had they known it might be accepted. And those, kind of the ones off the top of my head, I was considering.
So if we didn't move forward with this late received letter today, could it be considered, sorry, could it be considered at the next meeting? Or how would that, because there isn't a seat available?
You, if you're not going to consider it because it's untimely, you'd have to notice again the acceptance of letters and see who else and set another deadline. So it could go through another wave of letters that went out for notices of vacancy. So to give other people the opportunity to also submit.
Do we have the letter?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I didn't print it because I didn't have the chance to communicate with council until this morning after the board meeting started. But I can read it for you. It was just a short email. It says, Dear Clerk of the Board, County of Trinity. I was contacted recently by Mr. Alvord at Trinity Life Support regarding a position on the TLS Board. I would like to join the board. My apologies that this letter is being sent after your deadline. I hope you can accommodate us. Please let me know if you need any information from me. Thank you very much for your assistance. Best, Marla Walters.
Just one more fact as well that there, if the appointment wasn't made today using this late letter, they would still have a quorum for purposes of conducting business.
I don't know what the odds are, but I just see concern in setting a precedent that late letters are accepted from the standpoint of other people may have moved forward. And so from my standpoint, I would like to see us open that opportunity back up again to see if any other letters came in. And then move this appointment to our first meeting in December. Is the, can that fit a timeframe of opening up and, okay.
Before we get too much into discussion.
Maybe put that into a motion?
Yeah, just care to make a motion.
I do.
I'm sorry, just a quick clarification. Are you talking about moving the entire item for the appointment or just the one?
Just the late letter.
Thank you.
If you can put that into a.
We haven't had public yet.
I keep forgetting because it's consent, sorry. Okay, do we have any public comment on item three point five?
Shannon White, County Clerk, Recorder, Assessor, Registrar of Voters. It is of my opinion of Election Code 10515 that you, the Board of Supervisors, have jurisdiction. You're the supervising authority over these districts. And I don't know, and council would have to back this, but I don't know that you even need a letter of interest from, from somebody who wants to be on the board. I believe it is up to your discretion, but I would convert with council on that.
Go ahead, counsel.
I was just going to say that that's in all likelihood true. The only difficulty I have with using that discretion now is you did put it out for letters and you did advertise for that. So that's the only concern I would have.
Any other public comment?
Have no chats, no raise hands.
I would move to hold this letter reopen the period that others might wish to submit a letter. In all fairness to the public generally, move forward with the other names today and save this letter and any others that may come in until the first meeting in December.
Have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, I think this opens up a can of worms kind of with what council said, there may be just one person, just maybe opening it up to several other people after the timeline. I know as, as we filed, we had to file a certain date. And I just think those dates should be adhered by. So I have a little problem with that.
So I think that what Jill's suggesting would address that because we're saying that, well, appoint the ones that filed timely. And then we'll reopen the noticing and allow anybody else who's interested in that seat to apply. And then if we have a pool of seven people, then we'll have to pick one from that pool at our first meeting in December. So I think we're, we're addressing your concern with Jill's.
Are we addressing them?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Supervisor Groves, your thinking?
Do you have any? Oh, I'm, I'm, I get from your administrative viewpoint and I totally understand Jill's viewpoint, but also from my practical side. We beg people to serve on these boards and, and who knows, maybe this person changes their mind and we don't have a person. I would go ahead. If it was me, I would go ahead and appoint, but.
I think it's important to be fair to the public generally. What if there was one person and we're unaware of them? Then I just don't like the precedent that that sets. I understand what you're saying. I appreciate her desire to serve and hope that she will serve. Just want to be fair to everyone.
Right. Well, do we have any further, further discussion or competing motions? Hearing none, go ahead.
Okay. So the motion by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Brown was to appoint those who filed their letters timely to renotice the vacancies and bring back letters of an appointment item at a later date with any letters that we receive under that new vacancy. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
No.
Chairman Fraser?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving into public hearings. Grants, item four point one, conduct a public hearing to consider the updates to the Homelessness Action Plan. No fiscal impact.
Good morning, Susie Cockens, Division Director, Grants and Housing. This will be a quick item. The state is entering into round four of their HAP funding, which is the homeless housing assistance program. And a requirement of that funding, and we will be submitting an application at the end of the month, is to hold a public hearing to articulate any changes we had in how we plan to expend those funds from a prior year in the homeless plan. And the changes are really simple. This go around, we are submitting an application to support staffing through what they call operational subsidies or system support as well as street outreach. In prior years, applications, we have put a lot of the funding towards rental assistance and utility assistance. But because we have other sources of revenue for those two eligible uses, we're redirecting funds in the fourth round of funding towards covering staff costs. And that is the end of the changes that we are required to report out on. And the public hearing is to allow the public any input into those changes.
All right, any technical questions before we open the public hearing? Hearing none? Do we have any public comment on this item?
Have no chats, no raise hands.
Seeing none in the room, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
This is just a public hearing, so there's no action.
No action required, it doesn't look like, so.
That's great.
Thank you. All right. Grants again, conduct a public hearing to discuss the completion of a community development block grant COVID project. No impact to the general fund.
I didn't go very far. As stated earlier, we were coming to the end of several community development block grant projects. The one in question today is the COVID project involving the purchase of a Subaru van that was COVID hardened. Meaning that we are putting a plexi wall in a vehicle so that for transportation purposes, behavioral health staff can transport their clients and be protected from the pandemic. That vehicle has been purchased. It has been in place for about four months now. So we're eligible to close out that project and a public hearing is required to close out that project.
Any technical questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment on item four point two?
Have no chat, no raise hands.
Seeing none in the room. And once again, this doesn't look like it requires any board action. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sure. And we'll take a short break. We'll come back at 11:45 to move into county matters.
Saying why, I changed my mind.
It's because.
All right, we will call the November 1st regular meeting, County Board of Supervisors, back to order, and we're moving into county matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item be heard out of order. They may not have any requests to hear any items out of order. Seeing none, we'll move into item 5.1, Auditor Controller. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2122 for the Auditor Court Remittance Department 0712, increasing transfers in by $28,023. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2122 for contributions to other funds, Department 1990, increasing transfers out by $28,023. And approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2122, Contingency General Fund, Department 9901, decreasing appropriations for contingency by $28,023. Increase in general fund appropriations in the amount of $28,023. Current contingency balance is $104,268. And who is taking this item?
Christine Gaffney, Auditor Controller.
All right, thank you, go ahead.
This is basically something that we have to do every year. It is funds that we are, the Maintenance of Effort Fund is basically mandatory by the state per government code, and we have to meet a certain requirement every single year through the court's fines and fees. But as you maybe already be aware, that we, they're not collecting as many court's fines and fees, and so it's putting the fund into the deficit, therefore we have to come and ask for contingency each year.
Okay, does anyone have any, any? Any questions, technical questions? All right, do we have any public comment on item 5.1?
Have no chat, no raise hands.
Close public comment, bring it back to the board.
To approve 5.1 as presented.
All right.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll call the vote.
Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Gross.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Chairman Frazier.
Aye.
County Administrative Office, item 5.2. Provide clarification to staff on the following items regarding the implementation of the $500 per year service retention bonus approved by the board on October 18th, 2022. One, are permanent part-time employees entitled to the full $500 per year retention bonus? Or should that amount be prorated based on the number of hours they work per week? Two, what calculation method is to be used for calculating years of service? Three, are employees who have submitted retirement paperwork prior to the issuance of retention bonuses eligible for retention bonus? And four, are employees who have provided verbal written notice of resignation prior to October 18th eligible for the retention bonus? Fiscal impact dependent upon direction provided.
Okay, good morning, board. As you're aware, the retention bonuses is a process. And between the administration office, the auditor's office, we've had a meeting to discuss how we were going to implement this. And these questions have come up, not only from us, from the auditor and the administration and HR, but also from the union and department heads, that, the meeting that I had with them last week. So your assistance in providing us some guidance with those items. I do also want to bring to your attention a supplemental board report. Item for 5.2 is added to the agenda that addresses the concerns or question regarding, should the, should the staff have the authority to hold a retention bonus for any employee who may be involved in any investigation under codes section 2.60, 0.610 pertaining to the violation of county code? So I'm available to answer any questions and review any of those scenarios with you.
On the one that you just mentioned, counsel, is it legal to withhold anything until they're found negligent?
They're not have found to have any, have any violation, I would have serious trepidations about withholding that while they're under investigation.
Any other technical questions before we open public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Do you know exactly how many permanent part-time employees there are?
It reported to me yesterday, eight employees.
Thank you.
And as far as while they're under investigation, I understand that part, what happens if they are found guilty?
I think you're offering these to all employees. So I think their status as an employee is what should be driving this. You get in, I think that's opening a can of worms, if you say under certain circumstances they get it and under circumstances they don't. My understanding is that you all voted that the employees are going to be getting these, and I think that status is what's driving that. So same thing.
Preclude the status of someone who's been found in violation of county law?
They could, they're an employee, they're an employee.
If they did it earlier and we got unemployed, then what you don't.
So, um, is that all the technical?
So let's jump over to the people that have submitted retirement papers.
That, I know.
Counsel wants to jump in right.
Well, I think it's a similar situation, where they're still an employee, so I think you'd have to.
And I believe the reason why that was asked to staff was because of the fact, if this is a retention, those employees are not retained. So they, between department heads and myself, we just want clarification, if this is about retention of staff, these employees will not be remaining, but again, that's your decision and county council's direction.
I was gonna agree with you, that you're talking about a retention bonus, so just defining that as, is, you know, just what you're being asked for clarification as far as the retirement situation is concerned.
So my two cents, what it's worth is anybody who has.
No two cents yet, we have, this is for technical questions, we'll have discussion after we have a motion.
So jog my memory, that the retention, they had to work here so long afterwards?
One year as of October 18th.
We didn't, I don't think we added that to our, I don't think that was in the language of what was passed, because I know we did that with the, the DSA, but we, I don't believe that we did that with our, this one we passed on October 18th, I don't think there was a timeline.
Correct, there was no clause in the direction that was given from, by the board on the 18th, that the employees that were eligible and receiving retention bonuses had to commit to any period of time of service with the county after that bonus was issued, like there was with the DSA.
Then how do we, I guess I should have brought this up before, then how do we call it a retention bonus? And not a, I won't say it because Margaret got mad at me. Gift of public fun.
I'm also gonna get mad at you. This bonus.
Okay, yes, a service bonus, all right. So, I mean, we're calling it retention, we're giving it for people for, to retain them, that we're, we're good employers and.
Or acknowledgement for the two years that they did stay with us during the pandemic.
That would be a service bonus and not a retention bonus, not, not that, I have no idea if that matters at all.
That your discretion on how you want to describe it?
Like, I think if the, if we're saying a service bonus, that means like everybody that's an employee is this date gets, get this, if we're saying retention.
I would, in my opinion, I would be careful to call it anything other than how, how the ARP described it as a retention incentive, because that is the funds that we are using for this purpose. So recalling, calling it something outside of a retention incentive, you know, it's just my, my thought.
So did we, did we have an oversight in the fact that we were modeling this after the fact that we gave the DSA retention bonuses? We labeled this as a retention bonus, but we didn't treat it as a retention bonus. So are we inconsistent?
I wouldn't say inconsistent, again, the intent with the DSA was to ensure that we did not lose that, the law enforcement personnel that we were told were at risk losing due to the higher offers in other counties for signing bonuses. So we have a, a different situation here where this is general staff, and again, we want to be consistent in showing our appreciation and acknowledgement to all county staff, not just DSA. So that was the intent of this proposal. And the proposal that I prepared for you, October 18th, had the three layers of structures, and the board chose the one per year amount.
Well, and just, I, just for clarification, I don't think, because you didn't have that extra, you know, having to work the two years after, I don't think that changes the nature of it from a retention bonus, just from a standpoint of, you're still, you know, sending a message to the employees, here's what happens when you, you know, that we were grateful for your service, and hopefully that incentivizes them to keep staying. Just because you don't have that limitation on the back end of it, doesn't change that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Public comment first.
Apologies.
Do we have any public comment on item 5.2?
Good morning, board, from Santiago, I'm the building official. I have a problem with the date, the October 18th, because HR had me come in on the 14th to start my paperwork. So although I'm your employee till the end of the year, that 18th says that I'm not eligible. And quite honestly, anybody can retire after the 18th and be eligible.
I think, we respond?
The date of October 18th is, we were following the, the date that, when the board approved the DSA retention bonuses, that was on May 17th. So the date of the approval is what we used for that marking date. So October 18th is the date that we use to identify the date the board approved the general staff retention amounts. So. I'm not sure how to respond to your.
Well, first of all, I commend the board for the buildings, because I've worked for the county 23 years, never saw anything like this. So thank you.
So I.
And quite honestly, it makes a difference. But my department through COVID, we were there. Suzy, can tell you, we did historic amount of revenues, no reduction in services whatsoever. We did business at the parking lot. So we were here. And my understanding is that money was for people that worked, essential employees that worked through COVID, and we were there.
And just to respond again, I'm, I'm presenting to you questions that were posed to me from department heads, and in general, how do you want us to process these? So it's no discredit to anyone.
And I understand that.
At all.
I was asking the same questions. So unfortunately though, that date, because I, all I did was listen to HR and come in on the 14th, whereas I could have said, oh, I'll be there next Friday, then I would have been okay. So, and I'm not sure if she processed papers that day or not, but that's when I came in to start it. So. But I will be your employee till the 29th. And then, quite honestly, just like a lot of our annuities, need peace. I'll be here. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment on item 5.2?
Good morning, board, Ed Presley, interim deputy director of building and planning. So when these ARPA funds came out, you know, and I just want to make it just a very, very brief statement. You know, when these funds came out, it was basically decided to give these retention bonuses for the people that had been here through COVID. And I don't think we can really differentiate who the more important workers here are, otherwise I think there would definitely be some, some departments would be highlighted over others. Some enjoyed the luxury of working from home and not able, you know, they didn't have to come into the job every day, and they didn't have to take all these constraints that Jim was kind of alluding to there, of working in the parking lot and things like that, putting up barriers, altering our offices and stuff like that. But I think, I think the bottom line here is, this is for saying thank you for being retained during the pandemic when they could have taken, you know, their expertise and skill set and actually gone somewhere else. And so I, I, I just didn't want to lose sight of the fact that this was saying thank you for the people that actually did stay. So I think the, the 18th, it's almost like an arbitrary, arbitrary number, I think that CAO was kind of pointing out, that was just the date that we set. that was just the date that we said, okay. But I think what council said is something that needs to be adhered to. Whoever is an actual employee past the one year date that are still here, when this, these monies get, you know, disseminated, I think they should qualify. So, and working in OES the way I did, I seen a lot of people that really, really went above and beyond and it was really, really beautiful what this county did. And there was a lot of really, really hard times and difficult times that, you know, the board would never even hear of the, really the public would never hear of because the people that were out there doing it were just out there doing their job. So I just really applaud the county and all the employees for, for staying and doing what needed to be done during this very difficult time. Thank you.
Is there a public comment? Any public comment on Zoom?
I have Veronica Kelly Albies.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City. I first want to say that I believe every county employee deserves whatever funding you can find for them. They have gone above and beyond in many situations. I do however, have issue with the retirement and/or those who have quit the two week notice. This is, was, was put out as a retention bonus and the same conversations happened with the sheriff's office. Because it, you, you thought it would be fiscally irresponsible to not tie it to people staying. And that's, if that's what the grant says, that you're able to use it for retention bonuses, that is what retention means. But I, do I believe they deserve a service bonus? Absolutely. And if you can find funding for that, but call it what it is. Calling it a retention bonus i- i- and, and they're not staying, just doesn't seem fiscally responsible. Um, and the idea being that we could then use that money for more who are staying or, um, or the IT department or other departments that came before you for this money as well. Um, so again, I think they all deserve a service bonus based on what you're saying. But in terms of retirement and/or, or they put in their two weeks notice, that's not a retention. Either maybe just revise the phrase, um, embrace the, a new date, because I do believe they all deserve something, but you can't call it a retention bonus really if they're not being retained. Thank you.
I have Robbie Camacho.
Go ahead.
Robbie.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'd like to actually address two different points. As far as the eligibility, I think anyone who is an employee on October 18th, on the day that this was passed, should be eligible for it. The point was is that they stayed here during the pandemic. They worked through the pandemic and they put forth their effort during those days. If they were retiring, they were still here during that period. Um, second of all, as far as the calculation method, I think that the calculation method that should be used should be number of payroll periods based as far as, um, instead of like full years, I actually have a spreadsheet that I keep for tracking on all of our staff based on payroll periods. That's simple to use, that calculates that information. But, and as far as verbal notice, um, that's not binding. So that, that on item number four just, um, kind of calls me. But, um, any employee that was here on October 18th saw what the board did, accepted that, expected that to be binding on them and to come back now after the fact and say, oh no, it doesn't apply to you because you had plans to retire is really kind of a slap in the face. Um, I think that they served during the, the pandemic. They did the job under some extremely difficult conditions and it should apply to them. Thank you.
I have no chat, no raised hands.
And see no more in the room. We'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Before we have a motion, I would like to ask counsel, uh, how can we discuss each one of these items separately? If we have them, how are we supposed to make a motion to discuss these without, um, having the discussion first?
I think you could take them individually if you want to. Otherwise, the motion would have to include each and every aspect of that. Pick Walker.
Make a motion and I'll make it in the form of answering questions one, two, three, and four. Is that okay?
If, if that's how you would like to play it, go ahead.
It's also number five, the supplemental question.
Okay. Um, so the answer to one would be prorated. The answer to two would be full year. The answer to three and four would both be yes, based on the, any current employee on the 18th um, being the defining factor of any, what a current employee is. And the answer to five would be, sorry.
Investigation, I think legally it would be no.
Okay.
So four was again, Supervisor Brown.
He said three and four both yes.
And, oh, sorry.
And was that all right, a second?
Yeah, that was a second, I guess.
Okay. Now we can, now we can discuss.
And I'll just say that, you know, from the time of the final rule for the ARPA funds, which I believe was in March of 2022, that's the time where those funds were intended to have been utilized and, and dispersed and, you know, being rural and a small county, it takes time for those things to happen. Unlike a lot of the urban places that, you know, spent the money the next day and things like that. I, I'm glad we were frugal and waited to have good feedback from staff and the public department heads on how the funds, um, could and should be used. And so that's, that leans into why I say yes for, um, items three and four.
Ed, isn't that the only, I agree with Supervisor Brown. I'm not sure about calculating years of service to, you said years completed, so.
Full years.
You would have to have a full year. So if you were 10 years and 364 days, you're 10 years.
Yeah, that's just mostly due to the complex, uh, calculations that everything would require. I'll be.
So that would be a true retention bonus because they would stay one more day. I would have a tendency to cut that either by quarters or by half year, but that you'd have to complete that. But I don't know, staff, what, how complicated is that? Probably different departments are different.
So my preference, based on the way my spreadsheet is already set up, would be either that we round down to the nearest full year or that we go to the two decimal point. So if you have 10 years and four months, it's going to calculate that as a decimal of, um, I did that calculation already. Uh, oh, I didn't. It's going to calculate that to one point, two decimal points out. But it's, it's at your discretion. I can, I can make that work. It would just take a little extra manipulation to my spreadsheet to round at the point five or the point two five or the point seven five, if that's what your desire was.
So, but we don't know what that number would be. So in theory, if there's 300 employees and they were all one day away, that would be another $150,000.
Correct. I don't have those calculations in front of me because the calculations that were presented to you on the 18th did assume that you had to have that full year of service in order to get credit for, for that year. So everything was rounded down. So that could increase the, um, the estimated cost.
I would like to make a competing motion.
Did his get a second?
Yeah, Keith seconded it.
Yeah. So I'm gonna go through them. Obviously, five speaks for itself.
So this is for, this would mean amended motion.
This would be an amended motion. He's making a, a competing motion. Jeremy made the original motion.
It was seconded by Keith, correct?
Yep. So this is competing.
This is a competing motion. So, um, five does speak for itself. Item number one, um, I would like to see the permanent part-time employees receive the full $500. Um, on item number two, please round down to the nearest year served. Number three, are employees who have submitted retirement paperwork prior to the issuance of retention bonus eligible for a retention bonus? No, my choice would be to receive a bonus rounded down to last year served prior to turning in their retirement paperwork. Number four, all employees have provided verbal written notice of resignation prior to the end of 2022 would not be eligible for the retention bonus for this year.
So it's the same.
So last, yeah, so they would not get this year as if they were going to retire, we'll say next month. It's obviously not, we're not retaining, we're not retaining them as, as employees. So I would round down to the last year of their, uh, full year of, of working.
Run through those one more time. You said part-time staff, yes, full.
Full.
You said, you said round down.
The nearest full year.
The nearest full year on two.
And then the.
And then the other two are the same way, round down to the full year.
To the, so you're saying that you would, for the last two, that you would have, um, calculate their years of service to October 18th of 2021? Or December 31st, 21? Or to when they actually turned in the paperwork? I, I.
I would go with, if you needed actual date, I would go to December 31st, 2021.
Just for clarification, you're talking about those who are still employees, but turned in their paperwork.
Either now or post now.
Well. All right.
The problem with that is you're rounding down, their start date is the date that the year begins for them. So rounding back to December.
May or may not make much of a difference.
That's fine. I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna die on that hill, but I do think that if you have given a verbal or written, uh, notice of retirement sometime in this year, this is a retention bonus. Obviously you are not trying to be retained. You are going to resign. And if we're drawing the line in the sand as this being a retention bonus, I would think that if you are going to retire, you are not looking to be retained. So with all that said.
Do we have a second? Here you go, second. All right.
I want to take a stab.
Okay, we'll have another shot at it.
Um, on number one, uh, part-time staff received the full $500 a year. And my reasoning is they were here, whether they came for the full day or whatever part of the day they came, they came. Um, I would go with the two decimal points to make it easier on admin for calculation. And then are employees who have submitted retirement paperwork prior to the issuance of retention bonuses eligible for a retention bonus? I would say yes. Again, we're, in a sense, we've redefined what retention means because we're going back to, as Supervisor Brown had said, if they were, if we had quickly dispersed this money, we would have been looking forward from March. We held on to it, which I applaud us for, for not just grabbing it and spending it quickly, but taking our time and being thoughtful, the meetings that Letty has had to see how people felt about it, to hear from the public how they feel about it. And I appreciate that. So I would say yes to that and, um, and then yes to number four as well.
And so again, you don't put number four. So it.
And number five is no, it's illegal.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna withhold funding from the people who are under investigation. So, um, you're proposing full pay for the part-times and the two decimal places in the, to determine years of service rather than full year. So that's the difference between you and Jeremy.
Correct.
All right. Do we have a second on that one? I will second that one. I would, after seconding it, seconding it though, I would ask if you would be, um, willing to amend to just do the full year, um, full year. And just round down to the nearest full year, just to simplify it even farther. And then, um, other than that, I'm, I'm happy with what you've.
Yes, I will amend.
All right. And I will amend my second.
What's the difference between the two motions again?
The difference between your motion and Jill's motion now would be that the permanent full ti- or permanent part-time employees would get the full $500 per year. That's the only difference. Any further, further discussion?
Kind of questioned the reasoning on that. If you were here four hours a week, why are you entitled to saying that a person was here 40 hours a week?
I'm not looking at it from the standpoint of how much work did you produce, but the fact that you were employed by the county for what you agreed to do and you continued to do that. So if we're looking at it as retention, you stayed at your amount, just like everyone else stayed at their amount.
But Jill, if we're looking at it as retention and we, we did hold off on dispersing this money judiciously because of the small county that we are and to make sure that we have enough to, you know, to pay out everybody that may need it and other things for infrastructure. People that did turn in their.
This is, she's talking about the, the part-time employees.
I know, I know that, but I'm talking about just something different, number three.
All right.
You or Jeremy spoke about us being a little behind on, on sending out this money. Some of the county sent it out day one. We, we did not kind of, to see where we stood and try to be judicious about sending this out. But I do think if you, this is a retention bonus and you turned in your retirement, you are not planning on being retained by this county. So I, I do have somewhat of a problem with that.
While you're correct in what that word technically means, I feel that the discussion that we've had here today has shown that we're looking at something more in arrears. We're looking at retention as they retained. In other words, when we looked at it with the DSA, we were losing people who would come here and take Trinity County dollars for their training. And then they were saying, great, I'm trained and going and taking signing bonuses and larger paychecks from other counties. And so we had that carrot that we needed to hold out to say, no, we trained you, you need to stay. That makes sense. What we're doing here is looking at a, a county staff of people who they chose to retain and we are honoring that, looking backward. And so it is kind of two ways of looking at that word and I'm looking at it as though they made the decision and we are, we are honoring that. And I think the other piece of it, I'll just tell you where I'm coming from. We are so tight with money all the time. It's kind of fun to be able to truly say thank you to people who worked really hard and went above and beyond. And this is. And this is how we looked at it at the last meeting, and the questions that have come up. And trust me, I've been everywhere around this in my head for two weeks and had two very sleepless nights, thinking, how are we gonna look at this? And in the end, um, and my biggest concern, I'll just be really honest, my biggest concern was would the public look at this and say, well, wow, county, you have all of these other needs and, and you're just taking this for yourselves? And that isn't the way they are looking at it. They are seeing it the same as we are seeing these staff and these employees as they appreciate what they went through and that they are here working for lower pay than they could be working for in other places and taking the opportunity that we do have before us to say thank you. Um, so that is the way that I, I'm viewing it, if that's helpful.
I obviously see it a different way. I mean, and I get, I get what you're saying, Jill, I get it 100%. But if this line in the sand is retention, um, and we are trying to save a little bit of money and not on the backs of people who work there, but as far as retention goes, um, I think there are some people who are not being retained here because they decided to retire.
I, I, I definitely understand where you're coming from, I think we um, we kind of missed that vote in our last meeting, um, I think if we would have uh, had that discussion and we could have done like we did with the DSA, we could have put a timeline on there where it's like you have to stay for this long or you're not eligible. At this point, I think we've missed that. So it's uh, I think we.
Is this not the time to add that?
Well, I don't know, we can't go back and I don't think we can change what we did last month. So um, this is just, I don't know how we, because we said we were giving it to all employees. And I, I don't know, Council could weigh in on this, I don't know how we can, at this point, how we can exclude a subset of employees unless we go back to October 18th and start over, and so I think that uh.
We're saying that we're giving it to all employees and you had retired before October 18th.
If you're already out the door, I guess that you're, since you're not an employee, but if you're, if you've started the process, you're still employed. So um, people who, if, if somebody walked out the door, retired on October 17th, they probably missed out on a big paycheck, but other than that, I think we have to, uh, we have to go with employee.
Is that being incorporated into what we're talking about now?
I, I believe that would, if you weren't, if you're not working for the county as of October 18th, you're not.
With at least one year of service already, because that was included in your guys' motion from the 18th.
I appreciate the board's time reviewing this because again, this was a tough place to be when these questions were posed to me, and that's why I felt it more comfortable, because I had no authority to make those decisions. So I appreciate your time in going over this, because it's, it's a tough spot to be in, for sure. But yet again, you know.
So I.
Yeah, I, I respect everybody's decision and input on this, I mean, it's, it is tough, it's tough to ask these questions, answer them. Um, you know, I'm not trying to belittle or play up anybody, but it's just, it's a tough, it's, you know, it's a it's a tough spot to be in and, and like Dan said, maybe hindsight would have been, you know, a little bit more beneficial for us, but I just, I'm glad that we all went through this and put in our two cents worth of what it's worth and came up with something I think that we could all be uh somewhat happy with.
So I have a question for both motion makers. Um, you're setting the 18th as the, as the date that you get it beforehand, or if you're on the 17th, you're out, if you're here an employee on the 18th? Just want to be crystal clear.
That's what the motions were, so it's amended if they're not.
Wait a minute, let's think about that, thank you. I don't, I did not intend that that cutoff date was going to um, nix somebody out. Because again, it's not about one day in time, it's about two years of COVID.
Yeah, I don't know how we could.
Now we have to pick a date of some sort.
Yeah, and I don't know how we would include somebody that um had already left the county before we passed that resolution that said we were going to pay those bonuses, that's what I'm.
So, but does leaving and written or verbal notice of a planned resignation, are those different?
Mm-hmm. I think.
Yeah.
The written notice or is, is saying, I'm going to be leaving, here's my two weeks' notice, or here's my month-long notice, or whatever notice they're giving. So they're still an employee, but they haven't, and they haven't left county employee yet.
Who submitted retirement paperwork prior to the issuance of retention bonuses eligible? So I'm saying, yes, they're still eligible on number three, but your question was on number four?
Oh, no, it was on, if, if the 18th is the drop dead date, that's if.
The date.
If you were an employee on the 18th, you're eligible, if you're, if you retired on the 17th, you're no longer eligible.
Oh, retired, not given notice.
Not given notice, correct, actually retired or resigned. The action on the 18th, as I understood it, was you had to have been employed as of, and it was actually as of October 18th of 2021, because, and still employed on October 18th of 2022, because you had to be an employee on the 18th of '22 and had one year of service with the county in order to be eligible for the retention bonus.
Right.
That was, that was the direction that this board gave on the 18th. So I think Keith was just trying to clarify that that was still the intent.
Jill, are you clear with that?
Well, I guess it's hard to pick any one date in time.
Well, I, I.
It, it is, but we have to pick a date, otherwise we're gonna go back through payroll records for how long to find which employees.
I think we picked that date.
Be difficult, because I think then you are talking about giving public funds to people who are no longer employed.
Yeah, I know.
So, if you do, if you go earlier.
Same that we did for the sheriff, the DSA, members of the DSA, they got their retention for employees who were employed as of the date the board voted to give the retention bonus.
If not, this turns into somewhat of a service bonus, I imagine, it turns into a.
Okay, so just to be clear, we have, let's say it's October 18th.
Mm-hmm.
And I have given my notice that I'm going to be terminated on December 31st.
You're still an employee, you will be entitled to a retention bonus based on your motion.
Okay, I'm good.
But if you walked out the door on October 17th, you missed the vote.
Yes, okay.
Jeremy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your date also?
Does Keith ask both of you?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion before we call for a vote? None?
Okay.
This is on.
We're gonna vote on Supervisor Cox's motion, seconded by Supervisor Frazier. Um, permanent part-time employees are eligible for the full $500 per year of service. Um, the calculation method will be to round years of service down to the nearest full year of service. Employees who have given their resignation and/or retirement notice but were employed as of October 18th are eligible for retention bonus. Um, those employees who are involved in investigations are still eligible for the retention bonus. Um, Supervisor Frazier.
You went backward.
Nope, she was right. Those number five.
Three, I'm sorry, I did three and four together, I apologize.
No, good.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you mention anybody not employed here after 17th?
Nope, she, she got that in there. Yep.
Supervisor Cox, yes. Supervisor Gogan.
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
Supervisor Groves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's harder to give away money than uh, is to write for a tight budget.
That was a tough decision, that was, that was tough.
Alright, moving on to planning and zoning, item 5.3. Continue from October 18th, 2022, the appeal hearing to uphold, modify, or overturn the Planning Commission decision to maintain the existing conditions on tentative parcel, parcel map P-20-40 and project to split APN number 024-380-034, no fiscal impact. And are you, are you the one, Skylar? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Supervisors and members of the audience present and on Zoom. I'm going to spend um, the next few minutes discussing the appeal of P-20-40, which um, as the chair stated, is a tentative parcel map, um, which splits a parcel um, in the Weaverville community off Highway 3. And so this tentative map was, originally it went to the Planning Commission in April of this year where it was discussed, and there was some discussion on um, some of the conditions as it pertains to fire turnouts and other like road conditions on the map. Um, ultimately, one condition was revised and one condition was removed from the proposed conditions on the map. Um, the discussion said this was for the sake of clarity, because this condition still captured um, the necessity of any improvements on the parcel capturing the requirements of the fire safe ordinance. Um, and so that map was approved in April of this year. Um, after the approval of the map, it became apparent to the Planning Department that there was a comment submitted um, in regards to the map um, that didn't make it into the staff packet. And so this was a comment concerning um, access and emergency vehicles. Um, given that Trinity County, you know, is a fire-prone area, um, there was concern that the current conditions on the map didn't capture um, adequate um, road conditions or uh, fire safety requirements. So um, in September of this year, um, the map went back to the Planning Commission um, to discuss the conditions and to make sure that um, they promoted public health and safety in the community and that um, they were compliant with um, all necessary um, county ordinances. And um, at that meeting, the Planning Department invited both the Department of Transportation and Weaverville Fire to um, attend and to speak to any of their concerns on the conditions of the map. And there was a bit of discussion there, and it was found that the fire safe ordinance um, is still applicable, um, it is still required adherence in the improvement of the map. And um, in discussions with representatives from the Department of Transportation, it was found that the current roads' conditions were adequate. And um, the Director of Transportation is here currently, appreciate that, um, for any road-specific questions. Um, during that meeting also, there were concerns brought up on whether or not the um, proposed parcel split would cause um, inconsistency with the zone district or the general plan designation. And so um, the zoning of the parcel um, itself is rural residential primarily, but there is a sliver of it um, at the southern end um, which is residential office, and it's kind of part of that strip of commercial zoning um, at a Butts Highway 3. And then um, with the general plan designation, it is rural residential, and again, on that sliver of residential office, it is commercial. And um, from evaluating the zoning ordinance and um, the land use element of the general plan, um, planning staff finds that um, the zoning is consistent um, with the intent of the rural residential district. Um, and the project parcel itself um has on several sides is adjoined by other um, parcels which are also zoned as rural residential. Um, also in that meeting, it was brought up concerns for uh, the potential for accessory dwelling units being put onto the parcel um, at some point. And so um, I spent some time digging into the Department of Housing and Community Development's ADU handbook. And um, per state direction, ADUs which are proposed to be developed on parcels which are residentially zoned or mixed residentially zoned um, are found to be consistent with the um, zoning and general plan designation. And any um, increased density that an ADU could create shouldn't be um, an obstacle for the creation of more ADU housing. Um, so that's planning stance on that, like ADU concern, um, because during the original discussion on the project item, there was um, I guess just discussion of the potential of there being an ADU going on to either parcel A or parcel B. Um, there's been a lot of discussion in regards to how to access the proposed northern parcel, that parcel A, because currently um, the way that the parcels are configured is um, if you're coming in from the southern side, you're coming off of Highway 3. But um, to access the parcel A, you would go through Manzanita and um, Reservoir Road to access um, the parcel A, so the question was, well, why can't there be a road that goes from the highway through partite, that's Ariane, parcel A? Um, and that was most of my presentation, I did have a question to pose um to the applicant, which was um, in one of the letters to the Planning Department and Planning Commissioners, um, it was stated that residents of the west side of Jackass Ridge were told this would be in access to Weaverville's reservoir on Jackass Ridge and the Mulligan subdivisions Reservoir Road, can you substantiate this statement? Um, and that concludes um, my piece, and if, uh, thank you very much, and if you have any questions, please ask.
Do you have any technical questions before we get started, or? We'll probably need you later.
Okay.
Alright, um, with that, we will open the public comment section and um, and this will have um, for the appellant and the respondent, I will give more than three minutes, but for general public comment, you'll have three minutes.
I just have a, I live, I'm Patty Hymus, I live on the bottom part of the west side of Mulligan Street. And I've lived there since I was a kid. And I've been always told that Mulligan Street was going to be widened at some point. If you've never been there at 8:00 AM in the morning, we have a lot of kids. I let them walk through my yard so they don't have to go to the bottom of the hill or to the east side. Um, I was told when council came in, when reservoir came in, all of these different places that Mulligan Street was going to be taken care of. I don't know how many parcels or houses this can support up there, but that really needs to be concerned. I went to the um, Weaverville Fire District, asked them, and they said all they had to do was just turn around to make it safe. Well, we have lots of trees up there, we have lots of kids, we have lots of elderly. How is this going to make it more safe if you don't do something down at the lower part of the road and you keep adding more subdivisions up there? Just a point to ponder. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Goodyear and I'm from North Weaverville. I am one of the people who have submitted the AP, appeal to the Board of Supervisors, including Julie Roselli and Janette Tapped and some other unnamed people. We are very concerned about fire safety. When I wrote my original letter March 9th, I couldn't even see the applicant's documents, and so I wrote a scattergun, this is everything I know about the um, this area and why it needs to be considered. So there's a number of things that are truly part of this division and others that probably need to be dealt with separately. And they're kind of a distraction, but I just needed to get the attention. And then I didn't get the attention the way I intended, because it wasn't distributed to the Planning Commission, but truly it's appropriate that this decision is in front of the Board of Supervisors, because it is not just a typical split into of a original parcel map. This was originally proposed or passed in 1996 as the Riley Parcel Map, which was 9328P90. which was ninety-three twenty-eight, P ninety-three twenty-eight. And then the way it was designed was actually very good for East Jackass Ridge. There was going to be a county road. If the land was developed halfway up the ridge, so people could develop these above and below parcels. And I was told by the road department, oh, that's been vacated, so they can't use that. Last week I found the document and actually that easement that was on the original map, easement A is still in effect. This some effort in nineteen ninety-eight to abandon, vacate a road in that area. And it's recorded in the Trinity County official records as easement eliminate easement A. So I outlined for you in your packet, five pages, which are relating this particular issue to the general plan. And so one of the things that I wanted all of you to consider is not only the rights of the individual, which in this case would be the applicant, but also of the community. And his plan, actually Mr. And Mrs. Scribner's plan affects West Jackass Ridge, which is Reservoir Road, our area subdivision one. So it was me catching this at this particular time. I think it's essential that you hear this because the service, what they're, the developer fire as well. So that's a part of the round for fire. So they've been looking to put it elsewhere. It's been my experience, commercial agricultural size of trucks. Certainly that kind of traffic doesn't go up and down Reservoir Road on a daily basis. So the, the general plan asks that the neighborhoods involved have similar zoning and characteristics. Well, that's why I said if they keep this development and the roads and the access all on the east side, everything's fine. But the minute they cross over into using anything on the west side, you need to vote no. No, you can't split this parcel. No, you can't have an additional dwelling unit that's going to be accessed this way. The, in nineteen ninety-eight, the supervisor said, you know, parcel two could be accessed by Reservoir Road. But parcel two doesn't adjoin Reservoir Road. The Scribners had to grant an easement across the top of the ridge and the service road to give access. And in doing that for this particular parcel, I sent you photographs that show that the driveway, temporary driveway, cut right now, cuts right into the service road. It's going to compromise it. And the slope of the property, when they said they can't come up from Highway three, well, the slope of the driveway coming down from Reservoir Road is also very steep. And anyone who would buy that property and want to live there when it's icy or snowy will certainly take vehicles up on top of the ridge and either park in the easement area and block the service road, or they would try to park on Reservoir Road, which Reservoir Road residents are required not to park on the road right away. They are to provide all off-street parking. So we're not compatible for that. So we don't have the same zoning. And we don't have the same characteristics. I've provided to you that the Mulligan subdivision, which was named for the Mulligan mine, by the way, if you want a piece of history. Today, Mike Mulligan owned the house on Highway three. That's the head start house that has a little shamrock in the roof. And so he and his wife had the mine that went up the hill and then linked into the Bartlett Mine, which is part of East Jackass Ridge. So the Mulligan subdivision has covenants, conditions and restrictions that are completely not compatible with the rural residential area. And so let me see where I So in the Mulligan subdivision, you're not allowed any portable buildings, mobile home type buildings, no reflective roofing, metal sightings, no commercial noxics or offensive activity, no commercial equipment visually stored or parked on a residential lot, no livestock, one adult cat, one adult dog, or two of the same species. Off-street parking only for all vehicles. And building plans are subject to the approval of the developers' Architectural Control Committee, which I've served on. And it's how this works, the CCNR's work is we're a community that likes our neighborhood. And so we talk to each other when there's violations and we've worked it out one way or another. And so it works for us. Trying to include a rural residentially zoned group with this is, is just not, not possible. In two thousand and six and seven, the Scribners proposed APN twenty-four three eighty thirty-four and twenty-four three eighty-three six for a parcel map. And it was approved with conditions, one of which was you need to build a road, an additional road out. This neighborhood needs a new road. And so that would be in the tentative parcel map, P O six oh eight, I believe is the correct number for all of the details. In July of fourteenth, Planning Commission meeting, I asked the planning staff to please provide that documentation to the current board so that they could see what the previous board had already required. And so interestingly, the applicant decided to split off one, perhaps in hope of getting it through without this additional road. But in that time, more fires have broken out. It's become even more essential to ask for the road. So let's see. The other thing that came up in the, with the Planning Commission Department is the need for an encroachment permit. And so trying to get an encroachment permit onto a county road where the pavement ends before the end of the subdivision, and then you have to cross a service road to get to the edge of the proposed parcel A, which then takes a dive over the hill. How do you do that? And also the plant, the road department assumes that the Planning Commission has worked this out before it gets to the road department. That there, it's not their responsibility to try to work it out, if my understanding is, is correct. So would you give me a minute? I wrote you five pages. I think I've told you quite a bit of what's in it. I would like to tell you the reason why I wrote the letter on March ninth and why I've pursued this. It's been a very difficult, time consuming thing. The East Jackass Ridge has a lot of gnarly title issues that are none of my particular business, except for the fact that they could have avoided almost all of them if they had followed the Riley parcel map. But I feel really strongly that if we don't protect the service road, that the town is really susceptible to fire. And I also care very much about my neighborhood. It was to create a formal subdivision takes ten years. Ten years of my family's time, two times to go through all the state requirements. And then to pay for everything, the pavement. Yeah, it's a big deal. And so to then have to come in front of you and say, there are people that don't want to pay for the roads and they need to. And they needed to plan a formal subdivision. This is, you know, over twenty-five years ago. It could have been a good, a good development. And so also right now, parcel four of the Riley parcel map is the one that Angel Hill Road. I'd like to answer Skylar's question. I believe the street number for parcel four is thirty-one Angel Hill Road. And so it's a road that has had roadblock signs on it. Something happened between, and I'm guessing, the road department and then whoever owned the parcel, that that was not developed. But it seems like anyone who has computer aided design and engineering experience could fix that road and get it to the top of the ridge. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? I appreciate the time, by the way, Dan. I was wondering if I was going to get three minutes for that.
So the last discussion was thirty-one Angel Hill Road, is that what you're thinking? Okay.
And the APN number would be? You do? It's right here in the beginning of my little statement. It was it's parcel four, oh, twenty-four, two hundred, twenty-three.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any other public comment?
I know that Janette, yeah, is coming. We were also, we're also expecting Eric Weisman and said he was going to be here. He's working in for service.
Hello, my name is Janette Taft. I'm one of the original residents of this subdivision. My parents built the home in nineteen fifty-four, when the young subdivision was opened up in nineteen fifty-two. I've, I've, and I, my whole family's lived there and we still, we still own there, there in the house next door. I'm very interested in keeping the character of, of our, our neighborhood within the zoning that it has been assigned. And I'm not at all in favor of having rural residential incursion or impacts that would happen with the way the access would be granted. As a former EMT on a fire department, I'm also concerned, and this is not relevant to the, our side of the hill, but the other, the Riley side, where you have a split, you have a street name, Town Reservoir Road, and it ends visually up the hill a little ways. And then way at the top of the hill, you have another extension of an address on Town Reservoir Road, not accessible by Town Reservoir Road, but accessible by way of our subdivision. That makes no sense from a safety standpoint at all. First responders are looking for an address. They know where that road is. You can't get there from there. You have to have, have the other knowledge that you have to go all the way around the hill. So my concern is that I would, I would strongly urge you to reject that parcel split. And in any case, prevent or, or make it necessary that they do not have any ADUs and other benefits of a rural residential zoning if they're going to attach, if, if they're going to be attached to us. So denying, denying that parcel split would be what I recommend. And also because of the proximity, just not allow ADUs access to Reservoir Road. Any questions? Thank you.
Any other public comment? And do we have applicant here? Yeah, the project applicant that was, the appeals. So I would allow, also allow. I'm too.
Some, some people might have been expecting you to do this after lunch.
So we're making, we're making good time today.
I know, I just wanted to tell you that.
Do we have any, nobody on Zoom?
The subdivision person is not here.
Apparently not.
I have no chats and no raised hands.
Okay. So I guess with that, we can close the public comment and bring it back to the board.
May I have a question of Director Cocos?
Looks like he's ready. So yeah, yeah, that's fine. Are you going to ask him about it first?
Eventually.
Good morning, Panos Kokas, Director of Transportation.
Good morning, sir. I do have, I do want to understand the encroachment permit question, but I have another question as well. So if I'm understanding correctly what's going on, if we were to allow this subdivision, parcel A on the top would access through Reservoir and Mulligan and down and around. Parcel B would access down straight to Highway three. And we're talking about steepness of grade in order to get from Highway three through parcel B to parcel A. And for that reason, they would have to go the other direction. I want to understand the difference between a road and a driveway. Is there a difference in those two distinctions as they pertain to allowable grade?
Yes, there is. One, it's public roads that we have to maintain. The other is private roads or private driveways. Because they have different uses, we have different standards. The private driveways in mountain areas are usually set by the first responders. This case would be the fire department, CAL FIRE. From what I heard earlier and some people's comments, the road going up to Reservoir Road is a public street, publicly maintained. Anybody can drive through it. We do not have restrictions on the, who can drive on it. The only time you have restrictions are roads who can drive on them if they are private roads. And then the public does not maintain it. If it's publicly maintained, anyone can drive that road. Now, having a fire turnaround, or I heard earlier people speak about, may not be possible. We have the conditions that allow the Department of Transportation and the fire department to make certain requirements for turnarounds. Their parcel map is not going to be approved until those improvements are completed to our satisfaction, to both the Transportation Department and CAL FIRE or the fire department. We are the county to help the fire department make sure those roads are built, or the driveways actually, built correctly. We're not going to maintain them, so we're not going to use our standards.
If the road from, the proposed road from Highway three up to parcel B were left as a private road and suggested to be continued up to parcel A, would it meet the required grade for a private road?
Now, we have a lot, that we have a lot splits, a parcel map. The county's ability to have a lot of demands for a parcel map, or which is four lots or less, are limited. If it was a subdivision map that had If it was a subdivision map that had more lots, then we have a lot more leeway, what we can, uh, demand for the applicant. Now, this, we can ask for a private road to go from one lot to the other, provided we have the physical characteristics. But one of our engineers, when he looked at the area, and he said it'd be impossible to go from State Route 3 all the way to the upper lot after the split. So they need to have two different accesses.
Okay. And then, um, this statement was made, or the question was posed, how do you get an encroachment permit when the pavement ends, an easement must be crossed, and then the land takes a steep dive over the hill? Is there a means by which to get an encroachment permit with those conditions?
First of all, if they're going to have a parcel map, the encroachment permit is going to be part of the parcel map approval. Because if it's, depends who's the, has the property. If the easement, it's, belongs to the person, the easement is granted by the person who owns the underlying ground, they don't have to worry about easement, because the easement is given to a third party, not to the people who own that property. You get an easement through somebody else's property. It's like getting permission to go through somebody else's yard. So if you owned that property and you gave an easement to someone else to go to the reservoir, you still own the property. You can do anything you want to that easement. You need an encroachment permit if you're going to work within the public right-of-way. If it's part of a parcel map, the encroachment permit, it's included in that construction or plans that they're going to develop to do their work for that parcel map.
So in this case, where the pavement ends, is that where the county road ends?
Well, the county maintained road ends. The county has easements through the roads, and portions of those who maintain and portions who do not. There could be a lot of easements that are granted to the county, but if we did not have a road on it, we don't maintain it. In this case, I don't know the details, but it doesn't matter what happens. It depends who owns the property on the other side of the road, that who controls what easements go on it.
So this might be a question for you, and it might be a question for Skylar. Where the pavement ends, does the applicant own that property right at that point?
Typically, they do. Depends where is the lot line with respect to the road.
In, in this case? Do you know?
Yes, I don't know. I haven't seen it.
This is the parcel that, I, I'm showing her a map. So you have the parcel A and B, but this parcel here is also owned by Scribner. He, he granted a right-of-way to go into here. So this is the turnaround, and that's the lot line. So, uh, uh, it looks to me like yes, so this parcel...
So he owns this, and he's wanting to divide this?
Yes.
And you can see where the turnaround, the pavement ends before the lot line?
Yeah, these aren't, these are only accurate within 10, 10, 15 feet.
Oh.
So, but it would, that would be within the road right-of-way.
Usually the pavement, it's not where the right-of-way or easement is. And you have that all over the place. It goes all the way to that property line.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, um, Town Reservoir Road that goes up to the, the tank, Upper Town Reservoir Road, and I do agree that we should never have roads with the same name, because that does cause great angst. Um, but is that a, does the county have a right-of-way on that?
No, we do not maintain that road.
So is that owned by the water district?
But it could be an easement to the water district, not necessarily owned by them. Uh, most of county roads, if not all, are on easements, not fee title.
Okay.
So the underlying, underlying property owner could have given an easement, and that's the most likely scenario, to the water department to put the tank on the top.
Okay, so, uh, are we talking about expanding the county to his driveway, or we are not expanding county road? He's just bringing his driveway to Town Reservoir, which then goes to Reservoir Road?
Yes, that county right-of-way is not going to be extended. That person is going to have a driveway from the county right-of-way all the way to his dri, all the way to his, uh, home. And where we are going to require to have certain improvements made so fire trucks can turn around.
So who is responsible for making sure that he doesn't damage the fire access on Upper, uh, Town Reservoir Road?
Well, the two have to be connected, and as they have to prepare their plans and construction, which we're going to observe, because they're looking, they're connecting to our road. Anytime someone has to connect a driveway into a county road, we have to inspect it before and afterwards.
But who has responsibility? So there's this road that's, goes to the fire tanks, or the town water, and then obviously it's been used for fire protection. And he's going to put a road into it. Who is responsible for making sure that his engineering is correct?
We will.
We will.
We will, because before the parcel map, it's approved and recorded, we will make sure all those improvements are in place.
So let's go back down to, as we wind down through this subdivision, um, he's, would be putting one more house on this road. That road's capable of having that extra traffic?
Yes.
And I know this is way before your time, is there, uh, any, uh, long-term planning on fixing Mulligan Street or widening Mulligan Street, as was given testimony that was 40 years ago or something?
What is the reason to widen it?
Um, uh...
We have a lot of roads that are in very bad shape.
Right.
Worse than that, that we have to take care of first. The other part, if there is a public, if we're flushed with cash and we didn't know what to do with it, we could look at widening an existing road. All county roads, city roads are not built by the county or the city. They're built by developers, and then we take over. They're built by the county or city standards. We repair those roads, but in very, very few cases, we widen them. If they have a lot of traffic, if there are arterial streets, collector's streets, where their capacity to serve that area is not, uh, able to do that. So that means we have to get federal money to widen a road. In this case, we have to encroach on a lot of properties, we have to pay for them, we have to coordinate. There is no way.
So if somebody, and we'll just talk theoretical here, just because, um, just because I can, I guess. Um, so if that upper piece came in with a major subdivision, and that's not what we're doing, but a major subdivision, they would have to then have a second exit route, correct?
Yes. Whenever you have a major subdivision, more than five lots, our ability to ask for them to put certain improvements increases tremendously. And that's not the county's regulations, that's state law.
So if this person does this simple lot, uh, adjustment here, not lot line, but a parcel split, and then comes in above it and says, I want to do five on the piece next door, does that trigger?
Yes.
To be a major subdivision?
Yes. Four lots, it's a parcel map. Five map, five, five lots, it's a major subdivision. And you have the ability to ask for a lot more than you do in a parcel map.
So he, this, he can't use this to piecemeal his way up the hill?
I don't think physically he can piecemeal anymore up, up that hill.
Oh, what I mean on the next parcel over?
I, I understand, on the next parcel over, even that, it's so steep, I don't think they can even split it anymore.
Okay.
And, and the trigger there is because both of these parcels were owned by the same person?
Yes.
So what would happen then if these parcels that are in question right now, they're split, no trigger, because it's just a simple subdivision into two lots? But somebody else, let's say he sold that whole larger piece above, and that new owner wants to come in and subdivide that into just four lots, not five. Does that trigger?
Oh, no, it's four lots. Well, we have to find out then, how are they going to have access to those lots, what are the driveways be like? Because those lots have to have access to somewhere.
So the question that I'm getting at, understanding correctly, based on if two different owners were involved, or a single owner is involved, there's a different trigger and a different outcome, just based on original ownership. Is that right?
Well, if, in this case, there is the same owner that owns two lots, and in order to go to the lot that they have to split, they have to cross the other lot, the, the second lot that they own. If it's two different owners, they have to get an easement and go to the next lot.
Okay, but I'm still looking at larger scale development. We all agree we need more housing. And so I'm trying to figure out, how can we have the best of both worlds? How can we keep ourselves fire safe in this condition? Because it's easy to see, I shouldn't make any statements that show a leaning, sorry. Is there a way to get access to these that either makes it safe for ex, an unlimited or an unknown amount of additional traffic to come up and over and use the Mulligan access? If, if at some point in the future, let's say the original, the top lot was sold, and an easement was given, and that developer did want to develop, and we still have done nothing with the width of our roads beneath in the Mulligan area?
I don't think you can get enough houses up there to do that much difference in that Mulligan area. If you put 30, 40, 50 houses, yes. If you put three or four, no.
And the reason that you think that additional houses, then three or four, won't fit is because of the slope of the land?
It's the slope of the land such a way. The only flat area on that hill that you can build on that parcel they're not splitting is the road going to the reservoir. The rest of it is steep.
Except I question, like, I would want to know slope, and I won't know the number of what that means, except that this particular developer knows how to build really beautiful homes on slope.
Well, but he has to have access to them. And if you can't get a fire access to them, because the fire hoses can only reach so far, the trucks can only go so far from the house, they may not be allowed to build those houses.
And I'm sorry, I apologize for getting into this theoretical learning experience.
No, it's good. It's important.
You're going back to planning commissioner days, others Keith.
I know, I know.
That's okay.
Well, isn't that what we need? Is your planning expertise here?
Yeah.
Yeah?
It's, it's, it's not going to hurt anything. We'll see in a little while, but first off, anybody have any other questions for, technical questions for Panos?
I know.
All right, thank you, sir. And then, um, any other questions for staff?
Not having looked carefully at anything that was on the, um, projected road improvements that Jeff from Green Dot provided to us this morning, do we know if there's anything in this area that is intended? There isn't. Okay.
Okay, well, so, kind of forgot where we're at now.
You can, it's up to you if you want to give time to rebut.
Um, oh, I was, could, what do you need?
I would just like to know with all this being said, and there's a lot here, and having the Scribners not here, I don't know why they didn't show up today to say their side of the story. Is there any way we can table this to get a little deeper dive into?
I think, um...
This whole situation here, there, there, there is a lot to it. And I don't think all our questions were answered today. Um, I don't know what a week or three or four might mean to this, but I, I would certainly like to, you know, to get up there a little more and, and just have a better look and a better understanding of what exactly that we're talking about. So my request would be to...
I think that we can continue it. Um, I just don't know that, I mean, I, I don't know that I would be really excited to con, continue continuing.
Yeah, no, I'm not excited to either, but I'm excited to get the, the right answer.
So what questions you've got?
I'd like to get up there and just take a look at things, see where the road ends, where it starts, how steep it is. Um, and, you know, we've had answers by panelists, questions by Gail, and no response by, um, the Scribners. So it's odd to me that they didn't show up, and maybe they have something that would make me not want to table this. But without having all sides to the story, um, there may be questions I don't even see right now, that, that I may see if I go up there and get a look at it. And there's a lot here. There's just a lot with Gail's five pages of stuff here. Um, there's, there's a lot to disseminate here right now.
Counsel, are we sitting as quasi-judicial today?
I believe so.
So if we went and took a tour of the property, we would have to do it as a group?
Yes.
Just so, but I think that's for your, for your benefit, so that...
It's, it's up, you know, it's just, that's just my feelings, it's up to you guys. I didn't know that was the law, but the rest of the board doesn't feel like going up there. That's certainly up to them, and I guess we don't have to.
Well, what I'd say is when we sit as quasi-judicial, this is just as in a court hearing, if you don't show up to your court hearing...
Yeah.
The, the, the judge doesn't say, well, I didn't have time today, so we're going to hold this off. Um, so, uh, if, if the applicant wasn't notified, or didn't know, or some, something like that, that's a different story.
Did they? Did they know? Um, this is a, agenda under planning, so I will defer to Skylar on what kind of notice was provided to the applicant.
So there was a bit of confusion on the noticing processes. Um, I did send Mr. Scribner and his agent an email, um, when this item was originally going, and then a follow-up saying that it was continued, but I didn't get a response from either, um, to, yeah, to either email from either, so I don't know, maybe didn't reach them. I've emailed them before, so, um, so that is the extent of my notification.
But the email addresses you've used, you've gotten two-way communication on those addresses before?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that's, I guess that would be my second part, what Keith brought up, being quasi-judicial and then not showing up. I, I don't see him having any standing here. I think you need, I think you need...
Well, you still have standing. They have a standing project.
But, yeah, they have the project, but I just think that, I think as we determined last week at some point, you do need to show up to these things.
Yeah, um, we're kind of starting to get into the weeds here.
Do we act on a motion? Um, we haven't passed on a motion. We're still in technical discussion.
Well, yeah, we would, we would make a motion to approve or deny the appeal, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's spelled out there.
Another question for planning, if I could. You've been looking at this for a really long time. Is there any idea that you have in your mind that we could? So I guess what sticks in my head is, I'm just thinking about how difficult it was for people to get out of paradise when that fire happened. And I look at an area like this, and I look at fire activity, how it comes over that ridge, and this area is always in danger when we've got an Oregon mountain fire. And, and there's a lot of homes back in there, if you go all the way back through the Kelso subdivision, that are going to need to use that Mulligan Street. And at what point do you stop? When we say, okay, just one more house? Well, one more house with an ADU. Well, the one above it could put three more houses in there. Well, each house can have an ADU of their own. Somewhere you have to draw a line, and yet we need development desperately. It's beautiful land. Is there some way that has entered your mind, as you've studied all of this and with your planning expertise, that we could accomplish both objectives? To keep the safety, I mean, does it, and what does it require? Does it require just widening Mulligan? Does it require something further? Is there a way we can make all, all parties happy that you know of? And if you don't, that's fine. It's just, you know, you're the one sitting with the imagination as you study all this. It's just, you know, you're the one sitting with the imagination as you study all this.
It will be really hard to solve all concerns regarding fire safety with this one project. I guess the most that I can aspire to do when working on a project like this is to ensure that it adheres to all relevant ordinances. So that would be, you know, the fire safe ordinance, grading, anything as far as road standards. And so when I talk to DOT or when I talk to Weareville Fire about, hey, is there anything about this project, about the way that it's been conditioned when it was approved in April? Is there anything about that that brings you concern? And so far, I haven't, I haven't gotten any response that has even indicated, hey, let's pump the brakes. Maybe we should modify the conditions on this project.
Okay, thank you. And Counsel, our job as we sit quasi judicial is there's no discretion, in other words, correct? There's just looking very judiciously as to whether each piece, you know, follows the ordinances provided or...
What do you mean by discretion?
Well...
I think...
I mean, you're making a determination based upon what's been presented to you.
Right. I just picture that a planning commission never has discretion. They have to look at the law and apply.
But there's conditions of approval that would be discretionary, and there, I think in here where it says we have a hearing to uphold, modify, or overturn the planning commission decision, we could possibly add conditions of approval. I think that that's something we can do. We would have to have findings to support that, but it's something that can be done.
Chair, can I make a motion?
She asked for, I don't know, I'm struggling with that one because what we, what you would be rebutting is Panos's expert opinion. So we know that's opinion. So I lean toward no, and I think that...
Gil, can you step up then?
She's asking for permission to do that.
Oh. So... Well, I, yeah, I'm gonna...
Check and giving three minutes.
Okay, I was just gonna say that there were things that he didn't speak about, but he was only answering our questions. But I guess you could, you can step up, but we will limit you to three minutes this time.
Jim was asking about trying to make access off of Highway three and the easement A that is on the original Riley parcel map that still is in effect. It was not vacated properly by the county. Part of it has been developed from Angel Hill Road. It goes, sometimes it's labeled Labradoran Road, and it aims right at Parcel B and would provide a driveway that would be a drivable driveway for Trinity County. I'm not sure of the slope. I haven't driven it. But it's actually quite good. And so that didn't come up as a way to go, and it would keep the development on the east side of the ridge. Also, when the Director of Transportation said that the road could handle the traffic, the traffic would now include commercial and agricultural trucks. And so this road that has always done very well with just residential traffic, all three roads, would then be subjected more to commercial truck and agricultural truck traffic. Also, there are 10 unimproved parcels in the subdivisions that have been improved. So not every lot in the subdivision has been improved, so I don't know if his calculations included those. Plus, since COVID, the traffic and delivery truck traffic has increased. And so I would question Road Department computer models for estimating traffic in residential areas. Also, the nearest fire hydrant is on the turn of Reservoir Road before you come up to the turnaround. And from the end of the pavement to the pad is another 303 feet. So I'm not sure what the, how far you need to be from a fire hydrant to have a split. So my recommendation, based on what I know and have seen, and that the applicant may not have come because of discovering Parcel A is viable, and he would need to talk about that in public, would be to go ahead and overturn the planning department's decision and not allow an ADU at this time. This has come before the planning commission and the boards since 2006, and Rick Tippett had continued to require a road. And then the applicant waited until several retirements and a break in between staff changes. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and deny the appeal and support the planning commission's decision.
We have a motion?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, motion and a second. So further discussion, I'm sure we will have some.
I would like to ask Panos if he would like to rebut anything that was said, or is he just fine on his testimony?
Well, just some of the comments I heard about the additional ag traffic, commercial traffic for a residential lot, it doesn't make much sense. It's only going to be one extra house, maybe an accessory dwelling unit, so it'll be two houses at most. So I can't see where the commercial traffic is coming, the ag traffic is coming on that road from this parcel map. Again, try to, it may or may not be an easement in the other side. Again, this is a parcel map. We're splitting a lot. We can only have so much authority to ask them to build roads off-site. It doesn't matter if it's on their lot or not, if the easement exists. The county does not build roads on existing easements that are given to us. It's somebody else who does, because we do not have the money to keep in good shape what we have. And lots of the roads we have, they've been destroyed due to the storms, and we're trying to keep up with those. So we'll not be building any new roads. As far as I'm concerned, the planning commission had the correct decision. One of our engineers spends quite a bit of time discussing all the details. And as far as you're concerned, I don't see any reasons why that tentative map should not approve as recommended by the planning commission.
I would venture to guess the worry about the commercial is the cannabis being allowed into RR. I would point out that a full sequoian analysis would have to be done, and this is in an opt-out zone at this present time anyway. So that's not to have a commercial license.
Gil, what's your concerns about the traffic?
Public comment's closed, so. He is, he is done, but you can't, we can't just have engagement with the public. You have to engage with the board. And public comment's closed, so.
What I recall hearing was increased traffic post-COVID of commercial trucks.
Well, and she did have concerns that there would be, because ag is allowed on rural residential, and we've heard that from a couple of public commenters. The amount, the size of the parcel, I really don't think you're gonna see a major ag-type presence. And ag is limited on rural residential to fairly small type agriculture wouldn't be, so I don't know that that's really an issue. I can't, and I know as far as ADUs adding to the traffic on the street, every, every one of those residential parcels would also be eligible to put in an ADU. And that's, anywhere with use, and if I'm wrong, Skylar, you can jump on me, but as far as I remember, anywhere that allows housing as a use by right is allowed to put in an ADU? So is that, Skylar? So.
Chair Supervisors, typically yes, but I think that the difference with these subdivisions is that they have like specific rules that say that nobody can have ADUs. Thank you.
Questions?
Like this area is really problematic, but it doesn't seem like this one lot split is what is gonna break the bank. What seems like has been happening is every additional piece of development in the area, we haven't had the thoughtful planning in a larger way.
Unless we have further discussion or competing motions?
We're denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's decision.
That is the, that is the motion.
That's the motion. Supervisor Gross?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Cox? Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
With that, that will conclude our regular meeting, and we will be moving into closed session. I will read the closed session items. So item 6.1, Government Code Section 54956.95, liability claim, number of cases, two. Claimant Joseph McAllister, claim number TIBW-600044 and TIBU-600036. Claimant Judy Morris, claim number TIBU-600157 and TIBU-600286. Does anyone have any public comment on item number 6.1? All right. 6.2, Government Code Section 54954.5B, conference with real property negotiators. Address 430 Morgan Hill, Hayford, California. Agency negotiator Letty Garza and Margaret Long. Negotiating party to be determined under negotiation price and terms of sale slash payment. Any public comment on 6.2? Saying none. 6.3, Government Code Section 54954.5F, conference with labor negotiators. County's designated representatives, Ryan Rowe, employee organizations, general unit. Do we have any public comment on that? All right, with that.
I do have a question, Counsel.
Okay.
Counsel, at what point would I have to recuse on a claimant from Judy Yaccasaro? I'm not advising, I'm not asking if I recuse, I'm asking when it would be appropriate. Do I announce that publicly at this point?
Oh, when you stated for that, yeah.
Yeah.
So when that item comes, I would recuse within this meeting and then leave.
So does that mean that you are, when we bring it up, you're going to recuse?
I will, whatever it is, I have a close relationship with Ms. Morris and Ms. Yaccasaro. I'm butchering it.
I had no idea that was her name.
All right, so with that, we will move into closed session.